Welcome, everybody, to zoning board of appeals meeting Tuesday, November 29th, 2022. My name is Brian Riddell. I'll be acting as chair. To my left, I have Charlie O'Brien, acting as vice chair, John Himmel, and Russell Chin. On my right, I have our wonderful clerk, Mr. Snunen, and director of inspectional services, K. Duke, sitting behind us. If everybody could please silence phones, I'm not going to say K. Duke, because Marty's one. As of right now, we only have four members, so that would mean that you need all four yeses. We have eventually a member coming. We'll know in the next 15 minutes or so what his timeline is going to be. So you can either choose to go ahead tonight and here with four members, or you can reschedule to a later date. So as we go through the meeting, your choice, hopefully Jeff Frankel can join us, and at the same time, our chair, Marty Atkins, wish him the best. He is recovering from knee surgery that he had two weeks ago and unfortunately can't be here. So that being said, we'll start with a little bit of this ZBA 2255 Patrick Foley Esquire for variance finding to change the use from a single family to a two-family home on the premise number 121 Fayette Street. Attorney Foley, would you like to proceed with four?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, and I represent 121 Fayette Street LLC. I'm joined inside by Stephen Tridur, who is the owner and the builder of the property. The last time we had to defer this case was because we wanted to meet with Inspector Duka on site. He had a few questions about the property that hopefully we answered for him sufficiently, so we're comfortable going forward tonight with our proposal. The property is located in the residential B zoning district of the city. It is buttoned on both sides by multifamily properties. It is stone throws away from Newport Avenue. When the applicant bought this house, the previous owner was renting out all four bedrooms individually to four different people. He's seeking to make it illegal to family. The bedroom count in this house will not change. They only change because the footprint will be a second means of egress to the back of the upstairs. Unit one will be three bedrooms and unit two will be a one bedroom. They will have four parking spots, which they currently have anyways. It will let Steve just walk you through the plans over the building. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Can we just take it over real quick? Actually, can anybody who's going to speak tonight, can you please stand and take it over?
You swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now, Gary. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks.
Yeah, so pretty straightforward. It's a single-family, two-story. The current first floor currently has a one-bedroom. Right now, kitchen on it. Second floor currently has two bedrooms. Now, the basement has a bedroom. Second floor will have a new kitchen. We can egress up the rear with one bedroom, the living room. First floor stays about the same. And then the basement will just have two bedrooms, which is currently one. Pretty straightforward.
Two rooms, egress in the basement as well?
Correct. Yeah, a little walk. It's a walkout.
Okay. And just a little bump up is the only addition I thought? Is that basically?
Correct. Yeah. All it is stairs up the back bumping over the first floor. There's already stairs up here on the first floor. Bumping out over there.
Good. Anything else? Can we see it? We had some sage words of advice for it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, J. Duke, Director of Inspection Services. I just want to let the board know that I did visit the house for all intents and purposes. It is set up like a two-family. This is a good opportunity to leave the building safe at five protective devices and the required exits. So just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Could I ask about the garages in the rear? The commercial rentable without the door?
On the builder, I use it for, you know, storage of cabinets and stuff like that. It's mostly stored in my business.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question. Thanks, Joe.
All right. Anyone in favor? First call, second call?
I'll figure it out real quick. John Orfels, in City Brown Mall Road. I've seen six units, five thousand square feet. So in that area, there's a train station. Just gives us two dwelling units. I think this is a good idea.
Thanks, John. Second call, third call closed. DPW, we have reviewed this middle for the above referenced project and have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. We do have one letter from Marilyn McConville, 116 Farrington Street. Resided at 116 Farrington Street for 90 years. As a direct abuser, I have some concerns to the above application for a change of use. My property is directly behind. In the past, this property has been used as a three-room apartment on the first floor and three-bedroom rentals on the second floor in addition to the rental of a four-bay garage for storage of commercial trucks. Some of the trucks are parked here overnight, which eliminates any parking space for tenants to park on the property. In fairness to the current owner, there have not been any issues with the use of property, but in the past with the prior owner, there were many problems. I do not favor a change of use.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah. When did you purchase the property?
About four, four and a half years ago. The previous owner had trucks, not trucks.
Okay. Okay. That was everything we heard that was going on before. So there was no surprise.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA 22-55 Patrick Foley Esquire for variance finding to change the use from a single family to a two-family home on the premises numbered 121 Fayette Street, I make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding. Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
All good.
Next up, ZBA 2270 JCBT Architect for variance special permit floodplain finding to add two and one-half story rear additions to the existing one-story single-family home and increase the parking spaces to three on the premise number 62 19 Gale Avenue Quincy. The applicant or their representative here?
Yes, here you are, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
As I mentioned before, there's only four, so you need all four.
All forward or?
Okay.
So my name is Jim Chen, Director, 585 Washington Street Quincy. So in the previous meeting, there was a couple of concerns on the board that the rear addition is sort of overpowering what's existing in front. We're adding an additional unit in the back. And the other concern was the parking issue that previously we proposed in three tenant parking. So we went back to the board and the property owner is pretty adamant about getting a second unit addition without touching the existing ground. So what we did was we reduced the post addition footprint down to 24 feet by 37. And then we cut off the additional story. That will bring us down to two stories. And then first level will be indoor garage with two parking spaces, and then also provide an additional two exterior parking. So that sort of solves the problem for providing at least two parking spaces for each unit. And then the height of the addition is quite substantially lower than what we proposed previously. It's about six or seven feet, still higher than standard. It's the same building in the front. But it's only one story of living space, two bedrooms, above the garage space. So first level will be garage and then that's the view area. And then the second story will be two-bedroom, living room, kitchen. There won't be additional space above that.
Not doing anything to the front, right?
Not doing anything.
So was your shrinkage by? So what was the proposed before?
It was quite large for, so it was about 30, 34 by 37. So we reduced it down to 24. Provide that 24 backup space.
The top, the half-story, you just had, it was just like a playroom up there, wasn't it?
It was a playroom, but we entirely moved it.
Any questions?
Yeah, I clarify the parking. You would have the single lane to get to the garage.
Yep, single lane to get to the garage.
You have two cars under it in a garage. And then where's the additional parking?
Two, if you look at the floodplain, there's two outside.
Can you turn off the sound?
There's two parking in the garage and then two on the outside. 24 feet.
Which was our issue, because we said that it couldn't be able to turn in. Because you married, you got a tab, and you got plenty of room to turn in. Any questions, John?
No.
Two questions.
Is the owner occupied now?
Yes.
Okay. Can we remain that way? The first front unit will be owner occupied?
Both will be owner occupied.
Both will be owner occupied. Okay. You can have a seat now. Well, we took testimony before, right?
Yeah, I think it was just our objection, the size was awful.
No, we just take testimony on this one. What's that? Yeah. So anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. No new notes from DPW or? Okay. Same notes from before, but we've reviewed this middle for the above referenced project, commented our calls, specify how much of a pervert's area we do increase due to the development, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated, whether there be any fill or change of grade due to the development, or upon completion of the project, as their plan should, utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with the digital file. Same with the last one. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, all that part of here enclosed. I'm satisfied with the reduction of width. We have real concerns about being able to turn around and actually keep it like that garage. Looks like it won't be done.
I think the size difference is what makes it.
Yeah, it's too high. All right, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA 22-70 JCBT Architect for variance special permit floodplain finding to add a two-and-a-half story rear addition to the existing one-story single-family home, increase the parking spaces to three, which is now four, on the premises number 62 19 Gale Avenue. I make a motion to grant the requested variance special permit floodplain and find.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No motion. New business, ZBA 2281 Christopher Augustine Esquire for a special permit to operate an outpatient mental health clinic or clinic use on the premise number 100 Hancock Street Quincy. The applicant or their representative here?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Augustine.
And could you go forward with four of us as an hour?
Yes.
From our fearless fifth.
That's fine. Again, Christopher Augustine, counsel for the applicant Northeast Health Services LLC. We're here this evening for a special permit application to conduct a medical clinic called clinic use at the existing office building of 100 Hancock Street North Quincy. I'm here tonight with Julie Cullman, who's vice president at Northeast Health Services in charge of real estate and their growth strategy. Northeast Health Services provides high-quality mental health services treating anxiety, depression, and all manner of mental health issues in an outpatient setting in office buildings similar to the one at 100 Hancock Street North Quincy. As you can imagine, those types of services are in high demand these days, what with the pandemic and the pressures of modern life. Therefore, Northeast Health Services is expanding their locations to office buildings and properties such as 100 Hancock Street North Quincy. Because it's a mental health care facility, it falls within the jurisdiction of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and therefore, under the city of Quincy's bylaw, it falls within the medical clinic definition for use, and therefore requires a special permit for the use to be conducted at this particular location in the business C district. So we're applying for a special permit under section 9.4 of the zoning code. We believe we meet standards, whereas this is going into an existing office building, there will be no changes to the exterior of the building. It's a basic office fit out. The existing building has ample parking. It's actually an over 200,000 square foot office building. You're probably familiar with it, right near the Possif River, just as you cross over bridge into Quincy from Boston. We do not feel it will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the city, and in fact, offers several benefits to the community. Number one being the provision of mental health services in an outpatient clinical setting that is an underserved issue of healthcare. So it brings that benefit to the community. We don't believe there'll be any impact on traffic or public infrastructure. Again, neighborhood character, the use is consistent with a general office space use, with no environmental impact, and that we're within the existing office building. And as far as fiscal impact, we'll be bringing additional jobs to the city of Quincy and opportunities for employment at that location. So we believe we satisfy the special permit criteria. Happy to answer any questions the board might have about the application, but otherwise, forward to receiving your approval.
How many actual clinicians would read that to the service?
So it may vary from time to time. The office spaces, 7,300 square feet.
I think there's about 20 offices. So at any given time, there would be one clinician for the office, you know, seeing therapy or psychiatry or education.
And are you, with the red light being there, is there some way that you're going to transfer people there, and they expect it to walk out?
So it's all by appointment only. So we would assume that anyone that is making an appointment at the location is going to make their own accommodations to get there.
All right, thank you. No questions.
Anyone to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Comments from DPW? We have reviewed this middle for the above referenced project and have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed. You guys will sign them all.
My question is, again, the type of drugs that will be provided there or distributed there? Could you speak about that? Will there be any kind of distribution of psychotrim?
Yeah, so it varies. It's under the regulation of the Department of Public Health. So in a medical clinic setting, there can be any number of drugs. One drug in particular for minority of patients that find it useful in an outpatient clinical setting is ketamine, but that's going to be a small portion of the actual treatment facility.
So can you take your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA 22-80 Christopher Augustine Esquire for a special permit to operate an outpatient mental health clinic for clinic use on the premises numbered 100 Hancock Street. I make a motion to grant the request of special permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move. Thank you. New business, K. ZBA 2282 Roland Sonomary for a special permit to erect a sandwich sign board on the premise number 541 Washington Street Quincy. The applicant or their representative here? All right. Come back. I'll hold it to the end. ZBA 2285 Robert Beniers for a variance finding to demolish the existing structures on multiple properties and construct a 46-unit residential building on the premise number 1234 1244 Furnace Park Way and 211 and 217 Oakland Street Quincy. The applicant or their representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Rob, I'm in.
House floor, as I mentioned, we only have four. You need unanimous decision. Are you good to move forward? I think we are going to move forward. Okay.
Yeah, thank you for your reminder. So I do represent the applicant, Mr. Bob Beniers. Some of these board members here this evening may know Mr. Beniers and his family. They run a vegan sporting goods here in Quincy for many decades, providing valuable service to youth sports here in the city and throughout the municipality as well. Also with me tonight, Bill, this is Jim Burke, who's our engineer from DeSalle Burke Solid, and Brian Donahue, who's Donahue Life Effects. Both firms are in Quincy, so they know Quincy pretty well, and I know these board members know them pretty well as well. So again, existing conditions, as the chairman has said, this includes four properties on Furnace Park Way up by Oakland Street in West Quincy. The property is total approximately 52,427 square feet in land. It's located in a residence B zoning district. All lots are currently improved by kind of multiple non-conforming residential properties and one commercial property where Mr. Beniers operates, which is the example. This particular, these properties are really located in one of the gateways here in the city of Quincy, coming off of 93 on Furnace Park Way in West Quincy. With that said, you know, we thought a lot about these properties, the entire site generally, the way it was zoned residence B for residential use. So, you know, the biggest part of this is where the property is located and what it could support, and what we would need to really emphasize on in a proper, smart development here. As this board knows, parking is an area of concern with these boards, probably number one. So that was really our first approach, you know, providing that required parking to this proposal. And we've done that, you know, we have 104 parking spaces. Mr. Donahue will get into the design of the property. In addition to that, we know the environment today here in the Commonwealth throughout the country as well, with our Amazon and GPSs, FedExs. There's a lot of drop-off at these properties as well. So that was very important to us as well, specifically because the board is located on Furnace Park Way in very busy, well-draveled roadway here in the city of Quincy. So Brian will get into a little bit more, but the design of this is setback off of Furnace Park Way. It does allow for a drive-up as well. Brian will expand on that. In addition to that, we have really, really large setbacks, both front sides and rear as well, to provide quite a bit of landscaping, you know, throw up the entire property. Because of the nature of this particular proposal, as this board knows, this went through a very comprehensive review with our planning board here in the city, through same plan review. So as the board knows, you know, every facet of this proposal was thoroughly reviewed by both city departments as well as a peer-reviewed consultant, an engineer hired by the city of Quincy. They looked at many things, you know, traffic being one of them. Where this proposal lives, essentially at the intersection of Oakland Street and Furnace Park Way, that was obviously an area of concern. And we knew it would be. We had our own independent traffic engineer doing a traffic study. This rule from the city of Quincy, we viewed that as well. Peer review, another additional eyes on this as well from traffic standpoint, from stormwater management and retention as well. Jim will get a little bit into that as well if he's here this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions to that respect if Jim is not here to answer. So again, the proposal, and Brian will expand on this, is to demolish each and every one of these residential and commercial buildings as well on the properties, and construct a five-story building containing 46 residential flat units. There'll be two, with the structure of parking, there'll be two levels of parking under the building, which planning really likes because of the environment is concerned. So two levels of parking containing 102 spaces. Some of those spaces will be on the exterior as well. Most of them are in the interior underneath the building, but there are a number of spaces outside as well. Again, I talked about the drive-up, drop-off packages and things. Residential use will consist of both one and two-bedroom units. The building will be centered on the property. Most of it will be on Furnace Park Way. I think Mr. Beniers understood the site itself, the intersection of Furnace Park and Oakland as well. He went to great lengths to improve the site as well, in addition to that buying another property on Oakland, which allowed us to have an egress and an ingress to the property further up from the intersection on Oakland Street. So that was very smart of him to do. The relief we're seeking tonight, it's in a residence B zoning district, as I have said. We are seeking variance from this, variances from this board, and as well as a finding, because we obviously have an alternate use here. You know, we feel, you know, finding is, you know, can be granted here. It will improve the site in many different ways, including, you know, site circulation, stormwater drainage, and we tighten it as well, and providing, you know, really required parking for the ordinance as well onsite, which I think, I'll attest, is very important, very important, especially in certain areas. Without further ado, Brian, that's good for us. I'm going to have Ryan Donahue say a few words.
All right, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Brian Donahue, Principal of Donahue, like the chairman of Quincy. I have boards here to present, and I just wanted to start off by showing the existing property, which consists of four parcels on Furnace Park Way. When we first started this project a few years ago, actually during COVID, we really only had the three parcels that they owned originally, 217, and then down to Furnace Park, these three lots here. And the eventual recommendation that we pulled forward to the ownership was, this house at 211 was available, and we thought that would be a good way to make this project a better project, give them more land, and it would actually pull our access and egress off the intersection as much as possible. So the purchase of 211 helped us quite a bit to work in the internal situation. So I thought this landscape plan provided by MTLA showed the concept in the best light. Obviously, the building is taking the configuration of the lot. As Attorney Fleming mentioned, we have an access back from the light off of Oakland Street, and then an access in egress before the light on Furnace Park Way. Also, by maintaining the setbacks that are required of this building use, it's provided some fairly healthy landscape space around the perimeter, and also allows to have some parking on the front of the lot, a little parking, which includes guest spaces. So in total, we have 102 spaces, as Mr. Fleming mentioned, and So in total, we have 102 spaces, as Mr. Fleming mentioned, and 46 units, so that calculates about 2.2 units parking space each per unit. Also, one feature that we like about it too is that you can access, and, you know, the ever-present Amazon trucks and UPS deliveries and just people being dropped off in the apartment now have a road, which is off the traffic areas on the property. So anything that's brought in to the site is not affected by that in any way. As I mentioned, the, Rob mentioned as well, this is a major gateway to the city from the west side. We realize the prominence of this location.
This is the beginning.
We've taken that very seriously with the way that we've designed this building. So again, 46 units. It does present itself on the street as four stories, and because of the topography, it drops off significantly from Oakland Street to Furnessburg Parkway, about 10-foot change elevation from the street back. So we've used that to gain access to a lower-level parking area. So on the back portion here, it is actually five-story, but on the street it presents as four. I'll show the renderings. So, so this access is, this topography pitches down, so the lower-level parking just follows the grade down, and the upper level, parking and lobby space comes in off Furnessburg Parkway, which is the parking area from the west side. We also have some minor amenity space and some outdoor space that maybe residents can use, and I don't think that we've really made a determination whether this is going to be condominiums or apartments or rental apartments. I guess it depends on the economy at the time when it gets built. I just want to show some context photos that shows the intersection and the sort of mismatch of buildings that are on the site. Couple of two families, there are eight total units, they are now plus vegan sports. So this is a view looking down Furnessburg Parkway towards the school, the old school, and this is basically keyed into the locations. So you can see the street state is rather nondescript. This shows the, about grade level plan, where you enter the building, there's a lobby, bike storage, trash room, mailroom and so forth, and then there are 40 spaces at this level, 41 spaces in the lower level, and 21 spaces out here, which are accessible spaces and has eight guest spaces.
Brian, can I ask you a question? Just a clarification on the, on the access to the parking. The lower-level parking will be, as we face it, the right side of the building, Oakland Street?
Yes.
And the second level will be on the left side?
Yes.
So if you, if you were parking in the lower level, you could come in off of Furnessburg Parkway and go through?
Well, yeah, we would, we would promote, you know, ensure what's the building is occupied, we would promote. People that were assigned parking, and again, that's a, that's a variable right now, whether there would be assigned parking to the unit. So, I mean, if you had assigned space in the lower level, obviously the nation would be for you to come in the easiest route. This is really meant to be sort of one-way traffic, but it is wide enough, so in the event that you came in here and still get back to that side, it's wide, it's a wide enough road for the public.
Which direction, runway?
This, this would be the preferred direction.
Okay.
So any vehicles coming in, delivery trucks and so forth, would come in and then go up.
Okay, thank you.
And just, I don't want to get into it for you with the details of the layout, but we have, we have 46 units, and it's about a 60/40 combination right now, one bedroom versus two bedrooms.
Which, 62 or 60?
61 and 42. I'm sorry, 60% one and 40% two. So it's a, it's a basic, simple double-loaded carter with egress and vertical circulation, you know, which brings you up from the lobby below. So we also have elevation, but I thought the rendering is actually in the most, of the most illustrative plans that we have. So this shows, this shows the view from the intersection of Furnessburg Parkway and Oakland Street, so we try to keep the scale to residential-type forms, traditional forms, with pitched rooms and tables and siding, such as clavicle siding. We have a sort of ground in the building with a brick base, and we have a panel system, and then claviles and shingles as you go up. So this, this first level is really lobby space and circulation and storage and things like bikes, and then the living floors are these three, the top floor being sort of built into the roof to help with the scale of the building. So although it's essentially in the back, you know, it does present itself as five-stories, there's a lot of landscape fencing there, but the dominant views from the ends and from the street are four-story. So I think-
Brian, can I ask a question? So requesting conditions, you have, we had a 50, is that off the back or is that the street level?
The, actually, the, from the, from the street level to the highest point of the ridge, it's 47 feet.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the back does-
Obviously, yeah, thanks.
So, so I think that that pretty much tells the story much of the really, I think, the key detail, but that, that is what we're presenting in that separate proposal. Obviously, any questions that you have, we'd be happy to have you answer.
John?
Hello? Bye for now.
Something on the design?
I think Jim Burke, someone here would say a few words about-
Is he here?
Yes, he is.
I'm just kidding.
I thought he was with another friend.
A lot of people missing the night there.
That's soggy. I'll try not to be too redundant. Brian actually went through a lot of the detail, so if you don't mind, I think I could probably just start with the grading. Sheet 811 of, by the way, Jim Burke, who's the cell Burke solid, professional civil engineer, which is here in common with Master Box in Quincy. Right, there's a, the grade, he actually graded the site to really kind of mimic back what's going on in the site today. There in the rear, to the north-east, there's a low spot about elevation 42, and it's about eight feet below the grade of Willie Street. That pretty much collects the runoff for the water right now. So everything that you see in blue right now is the exactly existing low spot. We've expanded that. That, the stormwater control that shows that is handles of the 100-year event. And the garage floor at that elevation is 44, the base of that pond is at 40, so it's about four feet deep, obviously. And it contains all the runoff for the site, including what's contributing to it now. There's a significant amount of runoff from off-site that contributes to that, so we really expanded that watershed to include that, to make sure that this is large enough to handle what's contributing to it now. We did some soil tests, you know, it's mapped as a peat soil, which hydraulically is pretty good. Ground water is about three feet below the base of that, it's elevation 37, so the stormwater should have a decent amount of time to infiltrate to the ground. The peer review asked us to do a significant amount of conservative assumptions with regards to design that basin, slowing down the infiltration rate using a sea soil. He also asked us to use an impervious CN number, coverage number. He basically paved that detention area to make sure once water was standing there, water fell on it, and, you know, basically made it paved. So the, the site is conservatively designed, went through rigorous review. Right now, you have some runoff from existing conditions going to the east, to the back of the site. There's no runoff at all, existing or proposed, coming to Willie Street, I'm sorry, Furnessburg. As far as the other utilities and the like. And the other blue square you see up in the front parking lot, that's specifically for the roof. It's set up at a higher elevation, and it consists of 40, 52, four-by-four concrete structures. So, and a significant amount of recharge and detention for the stormwater for this particular site. There is, we're proposing, obviously, new soil, fire, water, gas, there's a fat, pat on a transform for power as well. Pleased with regards to how the stormwater came out in this, it was a difficult site to design, so right now it's with zero CFS running out of this site for 100-year event. Hashtag, it's not something.
Jim, that property that's to the rear of that collection pond on Common Street, is that, that's significantly above you guys, correct? Is that?
The site to the north?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably about elevation 60.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, we did fence the perimeter of the property, it's fenced, you know, we don't have control of that elevation.
Yeah, yeah.
But we felt it was a good idea to make sure that that pond is protected.
So I'm assuming a lot of that runoff is coming off of Common right now?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's, it comes off our control, you know, it goes there now, so something that we have to deal with.
Yeah.
So as far as the reduction, that, the 100-year vent, it's 2.63 CFS running to, to the east. It actually goes to, there's a parking area to the east, it's building well, and it runs that way now, and is now going to run towards us, and we have the opportunity to contain it.
Was that the adjacent building on Furnessbrook?
Correct.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think certainly will solve the problems, but it certainly helps. Any questions, any questions?
Any other questions?
Oh, good. Just note as well, considering the nature of this particular proposal, we will be appearing before the formal housing as well for five, five minutes. So I think, I can't stress enough the importance of housing, you know, both here in the city of Quincy and the municipality, that certainly made a deal for that, providing some sort of wonderful views as well in this proposal. I appreciate your support.
Question, or anything?
Question, on the price of conditions, building height, you have 50 here, but I believe you have, you mentioned 45, 47.
Seven, I think.
47. It's going to be 50, 47?
Well, it depends on where you take it though. Obviously, the grade is pitching away from the street, so at the back, it would be 10 feet, and what doesn't have 40?
From the, 15.
Good?
Good.
Got nothing for you now?
I'll be here.
And... Anyone want to speak in favor? First call?
Thank you. John Orifield, a student on Mulroad. I'm in favor of this, this is, we need to do growth in Quincy, it's probably like $3 million, those four properties right now. I estimate this will be probably $23 million once it's done, maybe a little bit more, so that's about $250,000 extra a year. It's like two cops or four teachers. So when we're coming into that light, when you come off, you're stuck at that light for a while, so it's good to have something that's nice to look at, so, you know, I just don't, I just hope there's not like 1,000 times there like there is on the building across the street, but other than that, I'm in favor of this project, this is good new growth.
Second call? Third call closed. Long list of things for me from the DPW. Well, nothing? Providing comments, like, anything? Something, pay attention, we're sorry to make it. Right. Opposed or undecided? First call, come on up. If you can just line up, if you got multiple people going to speak, if you can just come on up and get ready.
It's kind of fitting that that was in the way.
Yep, name and address, please.
My name is Melissa Shays Belane. I live at 211 West Street, about a half mile from the proposed building. And I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very, very much for holding this hearing. Please pardon my appearance, it's kind of hard to squeeze a Board of Appeals meeting between a day of work and a gym, so normally I would try to dress a little better than this for this. I actually don't usually get involved in matters such as this, and there are usually people who know what they're doing and are better, better equipped to handle it, but as a member of this community, I really felt the need to come here tonight, and please let my presence, when I usually don't do this, show you how much passion I have for this statement of a degree. As I mentioned, I live at 211 West Street, and I drive by the lot question almost every single day. I have also lived in Quincy for the better part of my life, and I've watched it grow and change over the past several years, and I have observed the effect that has had, both positive and negative. Accordingly, I was compelled to come to this meeting tonight to ask you and urge you and thank you not to allow this to happen. This building will clog an already congested area, interrupt cell service, and contribute to pollution and overpopulation, all while pushing those who need affordable housing further and further away from urban centers. Five units of affordable housing out of 46 is a meager attempt of smoke and mirrors to distract you from that fact. I don't care what the gentleman forage said, I don't need anything pretty to look at at that intersection, I'd rather just get through it as quickly as possible. As you are aware, the intersection in question, which runs perpendicular to the entrance to Route 93, is one of the Boston access points, and it's already one of the busiest intersections in the city. And it bothers me because Quincy has always been a wonderful place to live, because it has been a place that's affordable to live, that allows you to access Boston while still having a nice suburban appeal of not having a ton of traffic to deal with. And this inevitably already has a bit more traffic because it is one of those Boston access points. As the gentleman before me mentioned, this building has the potential to add upwards of 102 cars, 102 cars, to the daily battle to get on and off of 93. I'm going to even break that down, even if only half of the amount of the units that there are had cars that were committed into Boston every day, that is 23 cars flowing directly into the heart of one of the busiest intersections in Quincy. Now, I, I know that they had an independently commissioned traffic study, but I don't believe that that can properly speak to the experience of someone like myself who encounters this intersection on a day-to-day basis. As someone who actually does, I can confidently say that this building will turn Oakland Street and that end of Furnessburg Parkway into a proverbial parking lot. It is great for Quincy to grow, I'm all for Quincy growing, but it should be in a way that benefits, or at the very least, doesn't harm the people who have been here all along, the people who's years, decades of paying taxes, make progress of any sort possible. The only people who will truly benefit from this building are the deep-pocketed developers and their cohorts, who just see it as a business opportunity and could not care less about the well-meaning of our community, the community I'm really, really proud to be a part of. Sorry, that's a mistake. The type of people who will move into this building, and I know these type of people, I went to high school with them, I went to college with them, they do not care about life in Quincy, they just want access to their jobs in Boston, and there are plenty of places to build that will give them that without causing such disruption to the lives of the people who have been here all along, who were raised here and who proudly lived their lives here. Please do not do this to the hard-working people of West Quincy. We do not deserve to have to sit in gridlock to grab a slice at Oakland Pizza just so that the rich can get richer.
I'm from Lafayette Street in Quincy.
Name.
Chris Pollan.
Chris Pollan?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'm against it just for the traffic. I mean, I'd like to see Quincy get bigger, but the traffic is just brutal all around the city. They, we can build as big as we want to go, but if we have nowhere for the cars to go, we're just going to sit in traffic. So with that being said, because that intersection, the other side of, let's use, for example, the Far East Street, first Murphy's Gridlock, Crescent Street's Gridlock, First Brook and Copland's Gridlock, there's nowhere for those cars to go. Like the woman said before, it was a hundred cars moving at the same time, all we're going to do is spend the time in traffic. I'm here for another matter, but I just happened to see this, so I hope, and I see it was a perfect opportunity.
I appreciate it.
But like I said, I've been in contact with Noel LeBona and Director Gritten about how bad the public safety is in my own area.
Yeah.
And they're doing a massive study, which is, as we all know, it's Bates, which is parallel to Crescent, which is Copland Street and Madison Street and Wood Street, so I'm against it.
I appreciate it.
But thank you, T-PAD.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, Council Mahoney, how are you?
Good, presentable. So, Council Mahoney, twelve ever, so you have a board for a resident. So I'd like to ask, or start by asking, what is the right to build for this particular, this particular block? Right now, on the board? So it's a very simple equation. You need forty-five units square feet per dwelling to build, and this unit is fifty-two, the combined lots that are being proposed tonight is fifty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven, and if you divide, you divide that by the forty-five units square feet, the right to build in this unit is eleven point six five units. They're asking for forty-six units, so that is definitely great in my book. What you don't realize here is that, and I encourage you, if you haven't done it, I really, really think we need to take a field trip down to this area because it is gridlock, and it's front of the Rotary, First Brook, it's the exit ramp at five o'clock in the afternoon, you can't get across the highway, you can't get home either. So if you live on Copland Street or you live on First Brook Parkway and you're coming home this way from the highway you're trying to get off, you're not coming anywhere near getting to your home. If you're trying to get kids to school in the morning and coming down Copland Street, people think it's a highway coming down Copland Street, coming around to get into First Brook Parkway to head down First Brook Parkway, and that's just what we have right now. That's what the current situation is. This also came before you, I think in twenty twenty-one, and it was forty-two units, and it didn't have that extra lot that they got. So they got the extra lot, they're coming in forty-six units. They didn't downsize at all, they're actually increasing. So this is, if they got the extra, they got the extra lot with more square footage, they came in with a lower number, maybe we could have a discussion, but here's the facts. They're looking for more, they got an extra lot, they will up for units. So this isn't about, this is about making them have the money that they can here. They're not making, the other thing is that if they had enough spots, they could get a ten percent reduction in spots, which give them twelve point nine four units, but they don't. What they're not talking about is there's businesses in that area. There's a lighting company that's across the street that has diagonal parking, they're fearful that their company that will come will take over their spaces and it will affect, it will adversely impact those businesses. So, and then let's talk about the houses that are behind it, they will never see the light of day or have a breeze again because we're going up four stories, and they're going to be overshadowed by these buildings, this building. And the final thing that I have is, when we talked about this in twenty twenty-one when we were on Zoom, we were talking about condos, condos that would actually add to the tax value of the city of Quincy and add to the fact that people will be living here and be part of the community, now we're back to talking about rental units. Sixty percent will be one bedroom, forty percent will be two bedrooms, ready transit, people who come into the city of Quincy, that will adversely impact their community. I totally agree with the first person who spoke by saying that, you know, we do want to have good development, smart development, it's something that gets said all the time when I'm at these meetings, we're talking about smart development, but isn't smart to actually put something that's going to cause a congested area even more congestion? I did ask T-PAD when they came before City Council, do you ever say no? Because we can stop, we can't keep saying cuts of traffic. The second gentleman who came up talked about the cuts of traffic that happens over from Wood Street up to Gates Ave over to Grove to go down the hill. So they're working on Wood Street, they're zooming down that neighborhood, but it's getting worse, they're not even waiting, they're cutting through the common market parking lot, it's got to be dead, it's way to red light. So we have, like, it's like the Wild West in West Quincy right now, and we're going to add forty-six units and a hundred cars to our streets. Now let's talk about one of the projects they put in front of City Council, a ninety-nine year lease for granted links. If that happens, it's already gridlocked. If that happens, you're dealing with the exit ramp that's not going to, that's twenty-five percent designed and doesn't have actually funding to be able to fix that area. And if we approve this tonight, and we don't push back, and we allow this to happen, and when people can't move in the city of Quincy, we can't say that's cut through traffic. We have to actually look internally to ourselves and realize that you said yes to this, that we're saying yes to creating the very problem that everybody complains in Quincy about, which is that we can't move from one section of the city to the other. I left my house this morning at seven fifteen to go to Walson Tea Station, I got to Walson Tea Station at eight o'clock. Seven fifteen to eight o'clock, forty-five minutes to drive three miles. It was less time to take the train to town, which is also really dangerous to take the train out of these two, but I'm just saying, I really need for people to really understand what the problems are happening here in Quincy. Good development does happen, this one, this particular one, it looks pretty uncapable, when it's there, it's going to be gigantic, it's going to take over the whole area, it's going to shadow those houses that are behind them, and those people who work hard on those houses, they put their life energy into the homes that they have, they have the rights and abilities to have a breeze and to see the sun. So it's too big, we really need to take that into consideration when we do this. I know the planning board said yes, I don't think it was a wise choice. I fight all the time as to whether I should go to ZBAM or planning board, but really what we need to have in our ordinance meetings when we have these things, is it should, the ZBM meetings should say, what you're asking for, forgiveness, you're asking for, you're basically saying we have a hardship, we want to do this, and the hardship is anything but hardship, it's just about making money. And it's not about making affordable housing, it really isn't, that's just a nice little saying, we're trying to solve the problems, we're not solving anybody's problems, this is strictly about making money, and there's an opportunity, and we're running out of time, so look at as much as we can and as fast as we can, because the economy is changing, that's going to cost a lot more money to build. Let's slow it down, let's do it the right way. Forty-six units is way too big. It doesn't take much to think about it, if you just go over in that area. It's not going to slow down by putting more carthaus, it's going to be gridlocked, but people are going to get angry, and it's just not adding to the value of West Quincy, and it's not fair. West Quincy has taken on enough of the development, and it has taken on most of the development that's happened in the city of Quincy so far, and enough is enough. So, I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys? My name is Chi Chuen-Yoong, I live in eighty-two Century Street, I'm also part of the trustee. I come across this project online, and as I was looking for a project happening on Century Street that was passed in August, on two sixty-four Century Street, which is about a three hundred plus unit and four hundred parking spot, and then, in other day, this project might not come across my mind in very good, but given the fact that I've been living in Quincy for almost like half of my life, and I've been on Century Street for two years, I've been seeing how traffic is getting much, much, much worse the last two years. When I first moved in, it was from five minutes from where I live to ninety feet within five minutes, and now it's almost like half an hour, it didn't wash out in forty-six, from eighty-two Century Street to ninety feet, with traffic's machine. I mean, if this happens, I think the traffic is going to be much, much worse, as we are talking about additional three hundred four unit coming up on Century Street, faster, faster medical centers, apartment compacts, they all going to be going using fashionable driveway and using the centix and with all the other already happening westerns and traffic on there. So, I mean, this is like a very major intersections, when the, what we're talking about, the engines and the flow will be coming through straight here from Copland, which is where the worst traffic is coming from right now, from to exit on the ninety feet, I think this is going to be a much more, it would be a big nightmare for the existing neighborhood. Yeah, that's why I think I'm, I think I should approach right now. Thank you.
Opposed or undecided?
Hello, my name's James Devine, I live at one seventeen Cross Street, I've been there for eighteen years with my wife and two children. Quincy's doing amazing, we're growing, it's perfect, I think, except for some of these projects, which this is one. It's way too big. I'm not against growth, conscious growth is great. If this is a humanitarian thing about housing, then the houses that I've been looking at that have been vacant with no activity for as far back as I can remember, they could have rented those to people that needed housing, they've been empty. So the smoke and mirrors I'm hearing about, and all of the money grabbing, that's what I'm seeing, because it really was a humanitarian project, there'd be people on that, they're not. The water, they just, I just heard it's three, three feet to the groundwater. So at what level is the holding tanks? Are they already going to be full of water, or will they be empty when there's a rain coming? I don't know these things, I'm not an engineer, I'm just wondering, how does that work, if it's already full? I also heard that it's going to take care of the problem, the water. Well, actually, that land all over there, it's not causing any problem, it's very permeable, it has a dip in the back, it catches a lot of water, it doesn't shed water anywhere else, so there's really not an issue there. I understand that it's been designed to handle the water for the new building, so I don't want to hear about fixing the problem, it's not fixing the problem. It's going to fix maybe a problem that they're saying would be a hundred year storm catching like that water. Can I ask questions too, or is that?
Can I ask questions, boss, through the, what we can ask them to them?
I was just wondering, I think it's, the fire station is engine five?
Yeah.
How tall is the ladder truck to get up there? Usually a hundred feet, something like that, right? The red engine five?
Yeah.
This is not, this is not a ladder truck, right? So we're building these big tall buildings, we're going to have one, I'm not saying this here, I'm saying, we need to be conscious about how we're doing.
Yep.
The intersection, and it first broke control under the state, right?
Correct.
How's the lighting system there? It's pretty archaic, it's, it's, it's been updated a teen bit in the last five years, I think. It doesn't work properly. I heard about the studies of the traffic, independently done. I think, I'd like to hear about how the state and the city do it. There's, if you're coming off the highway, you're, even if the highway is moving, when you're on First Brook, I mean, coming out to there, you're just sitting there, you know, so like, that light isn't working properly, I believe, as it is when we're congested, and then that goes all the way down to the Donkey King, the Side Fox, it's traffic all the way to there. I'm not opposed to a project like this, I'd just like to see it smaller, more realistic. I think, I think it's something there would be great, but forty-six units, it's embarrassing to even think that it's out of consideration. And like everybody else said, the first girl that got up, I think she got in my mind, I was like, everything she said was, most things I was thinking. I also wanted to know, why, why do we have the variance? Because we have good zoning, right? We have, I think we have proper zoning, so now, is my correct to ask? Basically, they're coming up and saying, we want you to change the law for us, and if it is, then why do we need to change the law for them? What is it? Is it a financial burden to them? Are they creating more housing for low-income people? I heard the five or six. And then also, what are we doing here? If we're going to come out and ask for something, is it apartments or is it condos? I'd like to know that before. I don't want to all of a sudden have the city hand out all this and then say, yeah, okay, and then it's apartments, like, the people have issues. I'm really embarrassed, not embarrassed, I feel bad for all the people that I've talked to on the street, because all they say to me is, it's not worth going, it'll just happen, there's nothing you can do. It happened on West Street, they say. I'm like, you, you have to go to the meetings, you have to complain, but they just won't, they're just so tired that they just don't believe it will work. I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that that's how they feel, and we don't even have right now what counselor that has rallied our people together to actually sit down and talk about it. There was a Zoom meeting one time, that's about it, I understand COVID makes things very, very difficult, but, you know, when I moved here before, we had big projects like this, we would meet at Delicie's in the cafeteria, and everyone would meet and talk about it. And if it had started out that way, this might have been a small project that instead of wasting everyone's time, they could have come up and said, okay, the community is good with thirty or twenty-five. So I just behoove you to really pay attention and I hope you do the right thing, because I believe it should just be smaller, I do like the idea of it, but just smaller, and why are we handing the variance out? What's the reason? And if it's not a hardship or something like that, and I can't imagine it's a hardship, because if it's a hardship, how can you do all this? We have a beautiful school, the old building, it's amazing, I just want to keep that area looking great, and I think something like that would be great, but smaller. And now, I keep repeating myself, so I don't believe in that, and I hope you make the right decision.
Thank you.
For all the people that didn't come because they just feel lost, okay?
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Second call? If anyone else wants to speak, if you could please just line up over here. How are you?
I'm good.
Just name and address for the record, please.
Yes, also, do I need to take an oath or?
If you didn't take one, yes, I'd be delighted.
I didn't take one, because I don't know.
Yeah, thank you. Just we're telling the truth, the whole truth, there's nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hannah Mon, thirty-eight Funker Hill Lane. I live in West Quincy, I didn't come up here with a script, I didn't come up here with anything to say, I came up here with honesty. I've lived exactly where I've lived, thirty-eight Funker Hill Lane, whole twenty years of my life, and I went to Lincoln Hancock, went to Starling, now Southwest, went to Quincy High School, and now I go to, went to college. I work at the Starloks right across the street, and every single day, as I go to school or as I go to work, I have to go around the road. And, God, like, roundabout road, recall wherever you want, but it is the most clogged thing I have ever seen in my life. And coming here today, again, coming here for a six o'clock meeting, like, getting here was the hardest thing ever, and that's every day, getting to work, getting to school, it's, it's so congested, and I find it so hard, and Mr. Devine made a great, great point, there's so many people, specifically my age, who are so against it as well, and I think fancy suits are very nice, but I think at the same time, we need more people who are my age, despite coming into fancy suits and talking about how terrible it is. I'm a student, I don't want to keep taking, adding an extra twenty, thirty, no, not thirty minutes, twenty minutes to my trip. I hate it so much, and I, I like the whole thing that you said about a pretty building to look at, but it's a pretty building that we'd be looking at for an extra twenty minutes at a stoplight. It is so congested, it is so unsafe, coming off of the highway, specifically when you're coming around the roundabout, for people coming off, going south, them coming off the highway at around like fifty miles an hour, it specifically says thirty, I crash almost every time I come home because they just want to get through First Brook Parkway, and I don't want to be afraid of crashing every time I have to go around the roundabout, either go home, go to school, or just go to work. I just, I'm against it, and I didn't come with a script, and I just came with some friends.
Oh, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Emma The Classic, I live on two ninety-three Common Street. I had no intention of speaking up, I really came to see what was going on, it's a real turbulence kind of around the corner. My neighbors, thank you all so much, you know, they made me get up and say that this is too big for where we live, we are already dealing with too much. I, these days, cannot back out of my driving, because Common Street itself gets so congested, I literally get to the bottom of my driving and I sit there for a while, I cannot even get onto Common Street for my driving. It all leads to this, and I'm not going to take any more time, I just want to be another person who's just going to be with everybody else. We like where we live, we appreciate our neighborhood, I came here twenty-six years ago from another country, lived around the street twenty-two years, it was always great, you know? It's been, it's great that it's growing and it's beautiful, but it's just too much, traffic has changed so much over Traffic has changed so much over the years. I work in a, in a city and I, these days, I make the joke, I'm like, it's easier to park in Baghdad than it is Quincy these days. It is what it is, it is just literally what it is, and it's great, I mean, it looks beautiful and everything. However, again, I also do not need to look at beautiful building and sit there and look at it for thirty minutes. It doesn't help any of us. So yeah, we are, I think none of us are here against the growth, but this is too much, and it will just make everyone's lives miserable. Thank you so much.
I'm Debbie Bradley, nine and Great Street. I like the design of the building, I think something will obviously go there. I would ask the board to consider two things. One is, I think they should declare whether or not it's going to be a rental or a condominium, because I think that matters in terms of our development. In terms of the parking, I think it's great that they, that they provided adequate parking, but I don't see where the green space is, they're asking for relief on green space. Once we take green space away, we're never going to get back. So I don't know where in these plans it's showing green space, I did try to go through, I see a couple of little trees marked in the corner. It seems to me to be an awful lot of asphalt, which allow them to accommodate the parking. But I really think that they should come back with something a little more scaled back, and I think that the, the green space should be at, at least a little closer to the, to the zoning, which I believe is a thousand square feet per dwelling unit. And they're proposing four hundred eighty-five. If, if someone from the project team could tell me where that four hundred eighty-five per dwelling unit is, I'd be curious to know, because I don't see anything that resembles green. I mean, there's no dog walking area, or? Thank you.
Second call. Third call closed. Counselor Mahoney. Do you know if, if outside of the Zoom, there was never another, I know everything's up the video, Brian, you know, has there ever been another community meeting? Okay.
We, we had, this has been going on for quite some time. And we did have a virtual meeting with the help of Ryan, Alphamuchu.
And that was back on the twenty-one?
That was back, I believe, in December of twenty-one.
Okay.
I believe, yep. Nothing really has changed. And there was an acquisition of the property subsequent to that, two eleven Copland Street, which we, we thought improved conditions.
And then what'd you add to the right or something like that? Some additional units to the right, where are the four additional units?
Brian can speak to that, if I have a front. The, the footpart of the building, I don't believe that any bigger, I think acquiring that particular property was more for ingress and egress to the site, furthering from the intersection.
Yeah.
And they did, I mean, residents in the area did express some concern with, with the traffic. You know, and the city, you know, as I said, through site review, you know, looked at that hard, you know. We had our own independent, you know, we had our traffic engineer, peer reviewed it as well, and cities engineer as well.
All of those findings? That we didn't get any of that as well?
Just no real concerns, I think the, the, the impact, the impact of, of forty-six unit to existing traffic is a little bit exaggerated.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, not one hundred cars are leaving every single day at the same time. You know, it's, there's certainly peaks, you know, and those things are looked at, what is going to be the peak during these particular hours of each and every day? I come into the city Quincy every single morning on my Furnas Brook Parkway exit. I'm at that light every single day. I'm not sitting there for twenty or thirty minutes. It moves along pretty well, I go, I go down all the way to Furnas Brook Parkway, all the way to Hancock Street, every single morning. You know, is it busy? It's busy, you know? But I don't see what people are talking about today. But I'm not going to convince anybody here the impact that this forty-six units will have on existing conditions today. You know, but I think we have to be a little bit real on what that impact will be. You know, we're not talking a hundred cars again at eight o'clock in the morning that are leaving the site every single day. That doesn't happen. You know? So we, we feel strongly, because we've had this, this review by, you know, city officials, departments, our, you know, peer review consultant for the city of Quincy, they've looked at these things as well. And we, we've satisfied, you know, with our, with our traffic study, not by our engineers as well. So we get it, you know, we don't, we don't see that.
Again, I, you know, we, we, we never saw the traffic, not that we I mean, the peer review probably looked at it and said, it's okay because of the nature of what's going in there. You know, we've battled, and everybody tells us that traffic is brutal. I just, I'd like to look at the traffic.
They look, they look, they look at these, these, these professionals, traffic professionals, and look at the queues. You know, at the lights and where I driveway, our, our access to our site is, they look at all those things.
We were just, one more thing, we haven't, we need, we weren't presented with it, so we, you know.
We can't address.
We can't address, we can't address concerns, we haven't seen anything of the traffic stuff. You know, do you have one?
We certainly have the traffic study, I thought, and it was, you know, that was provided to both, you know, Ali Gold, who's the city engineer, as well as the peer review consultants. You know, those professionals look, look at all these things.
Oh, no, I know, I understand that, but the, the opposition here that we're looking at tonight is, is based on traffic. And we can't answer that because we aren't saying, I know that the others did. But we're asked, we're being asked to make a call on something that is a tropical area, that we don't know anything about the traffic? What, where the reviews came in, where did, what the numbers said? You know, were there any impacts involved? Were there any recommendations? So, and, you know, I, I feel deshoned making a, a call on something that I haven't seen.
Yeah, certainly, we could certainly provide the study and the data and material to this board as well. You know, if they want to review it. But it's my understanding that it's been reviewed by those professionals within the city, as well as a peer review itself that, that looks at these things.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That the board obviously relies on those things as well.
And the city traffic engineer was also done. But I get back to my point. We have to address it because it's being raised at the meeting tonight. Do you know what I'm saying to you? It's part, it's part of.
I, I understand it, but it has, but it was reviewed.
Not by us.
You know, not by this, not by this board.
Right.
But but I know you rely on, on the professionals reviewing those things as well.
And I just, I just out of curiosity, I'd like to see what the professionals said, I know it's.
We could separately provide.
Yeah.
Those, those counts.
I mean, I, I, that's the way I feel about it. I'm I'm not ready, I'm not ready to vote yea or nay until I see a report, how do we do that?
I understand.
Okay. Well, I've got enough concerns outside of the traffic that I could help.
What is it, density, what are your concerns?
It's too big, it's too dense, green spaces way less than it should be. Minimum walling way less than it should be.
Similar to what Charlie said also, the request for the variances, I'm not quite sure that the legitimate request for a variance because of the topography, they require these posses, knowing what they want to create. And then they say, well, we can't put something in there because of the topography. It just, it's a concern, I also echo Charlie's point, every single person who proposes natural traffic. But we don't have the traffic studies. It's absurd to, for us to make a decision without being informed. Beyond opinions, tonight's comments are opinions. I'd like to see something more tangible, more scientific, so.
Well, they're not opinions, they're, they're actually, they've been reviewed by those.
That I would like to see. Still probably can make an opinion, as well, basically.
The other thing is, I don't know, twenty twenty-one was your last meeting on Zoom. I don't know whether you would benefit by having another meeting.
I don't believe you would have, because nothing changed.
I think free.
You know, other than the acquisition of the site, we add, you know, four or five units.
So in your opinion, you don't, wouldn't want, you wouldn't welcome another meeting?
I, I would be willing to offer that, sure. It would help.
It's about a year after your, your, your one and only. Coming into December twenty twenty-two.
And most, and most of our time was spent, you know, preparing and filing with, with the planning board and going through that particular procedure.
I, I'd just like to see a level of cooperation, communication, always, you know, between the developer and the neighbors that you can be in the area with, so.
Yeah, I mean, I had similar, I asked the question about fifty feet, because I just haven't. But I'd like to preface this, but the building across the street is even higher, the old school's even higher, so you know, I get, I get focused on certain areas, there is a lot of drop off up Common Street, so I understand the height that, you know, that ultimately shows. I think that, you know, you've heard some comments from the board about, you know, I think we, we definitely benefit from a traffic study at this point. Just from putting our eyes on it. And I understand, you know, we can be talked to, we'll go on the face about who's reviewed it, but my friend Charlie here has spent a long time with the D O T, he can definitely, you know, take some, and put his own eyes on it and and maybe feel some comfortability, and then I think, you know, in addition, he might have some, some size issues to address that it seems like, you know, that we've all, we all kind of are a little taken aback about the size, I know it's a cornerstone and you do have a lot of square footage. But I think we're getting a little outside of the, a lot of the developments that we're seeing now are outside of you know, typical areas that we've seen larger projects, we're getting into more densely populated neighborhoods, which you're starting to hear throughout the city, you know, more grumbling because it's not on Hancock Street, it's not on, it's not in tucked in areas where you wouldn't see it, it's, it's in people's backyards, it's, it's in people's purview. Which obviously, you know, creates more opposition, you know, and, and that's where we have to balance as a board between finding some, some balance.
I understand, I understand.
So I just think that, you know, I think that, one, if we could just get our eyes on that traffic study, Robert, and, and just, you know, have us take a peek at it and, and, you know, come back and, you know, we only have one meeting in December, which I don't think would give you enough time to address Charlie's concerns about potentially doing another community meeting and seeing if we can, you know, show these plans to some neighbors and see what kind of attendance we have. I think that would, you know, help Russell over, I'm sorry, I'm trying to Russell. So what were you, January, thirteen, ten? January tenth, all right? Come back.
January tenth should be fine.
Okay. So can you, and, and if you can get it, so it's right away on the traffic side.
Certainly do that, yeah, that, that would be no problem.
I mean, I'd say that, but I'd say, you know, two weeks, but I don't think we're gonna say that's our only meeting in December. I don't think you could pull together a community meeting in that period.
Not a community meeting, I'm not sure unless school health at all, you know.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
We've been pretty transparent and, and we did, you know, with the assistance of Council of Alphamuchu, we did have one, yes. It was, it was.
Yeah, we did get a letter.
Almost a year ago, but, but again, not, not, not much has changed with the particular.
I know Counselor DeBona is, is trying to fill in during this transition period, and he did send a letter. You know, it looks like, I don't know how many people it was mailed to. It doesn't say anywhere, it doesn't say how many people in the ward it was mailed to, but he mailed the letter basically saying.
Usually pretty extensive.
Come here. For your community meeting, I don't.
His mail is usually pretty extensive.
Oh, it was, it was twenty-nine hundred, so he mailed twenty-nine hundred people telling them to come here.
Which is pretty extensive.
Pretty extensive, I agree.
I, I don't even recall the exact number of people that, that appeared.
Does that?
Yeah, it makes a difference if he sent out twenty-nine hundred, I don't know when he sent it, how.
November fourteenth.
November fourteenth? That's a story. A little bit tight, but to me.
But it's.
My, my point is really just offer that to you as a suggestion, to see whether or not they could be, of course, should be moved, the minds of less opposition to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we always want to be.
If you feel it's not worth it, that's entirely.
No, I'm not saying it's not worth it, you know, we, we went that route and I'm, I'm always full transparency, you know, reaching out to the local counselor immediately, you know, with any development, any particular award, you know, involved in it as well, and we did that here as well.
I would also say that given the pushback based on traffic, it would have been very nice for us to have the traffic board interviews.
In my era, I never thought the defense board would review these traffic studies, but it had been reviewed by our.
Alright.
Yeah, I didn't know you do that much, but my, my apologies.
Yeah, so let's do, let's do January tenth.
Okay.
And you, your call, and if you want to try to, you know, put together something with Counselor DeBona and, and see if it's, you know, worked well.
Absolutely, you know, I think like I said, that, you know, that was obviously Russell's suggestion that, well, we will probably have a fit number, we'll have them review the tapes and, you know, be able to, you know, have a full board at that point. Okay, thank you.
Counselor, do you have something else to wonder at, I know you have.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention too, that although the traffic study was reviewed at the planning board, since that, and I asked us to teep out. We have, this is before you, it's one project that's before you. There's another one that's down the street that you guys just said no to, which is on Copland Street, which was supposed to be suspended with six units, and you said no to, and then right around the corner, you're doing the traffic study, so there's a lot of things happening in this area, so it's not just about what's happening, it's about what could potentially happen.
Got you, got you.
So I'm very concerned about the idea of putting forty-six units into an area that's already congested, that could be changing dramatically. The state's coming in to be able to be, to supposedly make it better, but it may not make it better, it could make it actually worse after we make forty-six units there. So you have to be very conscientious of what we're doing to create a master plan of really what we're trying to accomplish here in City Quincy. If we want a ninety-nine year lease, we have to consider what we're doing in the neighborhood at the same time. We can't be having these multiple conversations and pretending like we're not creating the impact of this. And the traffic, traffic engineer, we got every single one, I've never been to any meeting where a traffic engineer doesn't say, there is absolutely no impact.
Well, Counselor, did you say that the state is doing a study?
The state is doing, I believe that there's a study going on, I have to go back to the exact, above Furnas Brook Parkway Rotary. And then the state's, they're at twenty-five percent design fans, the exit ramp coming off the exit, and the whole corridor has to be taken a look at.
Right, yeah.
So we're looking at a ninety-nine year lease, which was brought before the council, and that was a big issue too, is you can't get across to, or should you drive? And you can't get off the highway. And I'm telling you right now, you can't, and the people who are trying to get back to come down Furnas Brook Parkway, the reason why, and the, and the intersection, we found Furnas Brook Parkway all the way down to Corey Street, that's one of the most dangerous intersections, the whole area is, it's a speedway. Because as soon as you get through the light, they're going ninety miles an hour to get down that street. So whoever's doing the traffic study, sure, remove the traffic. But we're not taking into consideration the accidents that are happening, it's a very dangerous, like, I do know that I asked that question to teep out and they don't have the odd man applies and they'll change it, but in fact.
All right.
So it's just a concern, I think you have to look at the whole area, not just.
I agree, that's, that's a tough assignment.
I think that it's a pretty big segment, I don't say it all the time, and I, and I don't, you know, I'm not trying to say we're going through a zoning re-study at your level in the chambers upstairs, you know, again, something else to address.
Definitely.
A master plan to address traffic, a master plan, you know, we can't do that on our board level, you know, so I, I just, I, I just.
So I have to raise awareness.
I get it, I get it, no, I appreciate it.
Honestly, sometimes I'm, I'm in my death ears, but not here.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
I do too.
All right. And I do see you raising your hand, we already had time to speak, so we're just, we're gonna, Charlie, can we make a motion to move this to the thirteenth?
Mr. Chairman.
January, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case.
Actually, before you do that, I just want to re-resent, because I forgot. Two letters of opposition, which I forgot. I must have got it wrong. Andrea Bartik, sixteen Salem Street, Quincy, Mass. As a resident of West Quincy, I strongly opposes property that consists of existing units. Tear down these five buildings, build forty-six unit traffic, again, the, the biggest issue. Now you're adding more to the traffic, plus is it necessary to put a five story building? Put a moratorium on anything over three units until the economy compensates that. And then Joanne Rice, two sixty-eight Common Street, Quincy. Again, to replace five existing buildings with forty-six units, two parking spots. In the parent neighborhood, which consists mainly of single or two family homes with yards, want to go a significant shift as a result of the project. Questions? We already answered most of these. City planning trees, but. Who are the units intended for? I think that was, you know, a question, Rob, you know, I think maybe try and, you know, get a little clarity on that as well, if you could, you know, whether it's apartments or condos. I think that the board, and I, and I understand its market value, it's, it's a challenge.
Sometimes it's very difficult.
Oh, I get it, I get it.
I like to say that leaning more towards, many developers leaning more towards
Apartments.
Cut mediums.
Okay.
If the market conditions are such.
Okay. Five story multi-unit in the intersection is. Five-story multi-unit in the intersection is taking account of traffic study, held this project together, playing with the second multi-unit building literally next door to one Copland Street. Proposal overly dense and two lots in the neighborhood. Sorry, Charlie.
That's all right. Your turn, Charlie. Mr. Chairman, regarding case of Z B A twenty-two dash eighty-five, a raw opinion is for a variance finding to demolish the existing structures, a multiple properties, and construct a forty-six unit residential building on the premises numbered one, two, three, four, one, two, four, four, front of the parkway, and two eleven and two seventeen Copland Street. I make a motion to move this to January tenth.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Don't move.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
What are you calling this? I think I just want to speak to Bob. Sign, do you sign it?
Sign it. I want to call back. No, 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 I.
That's me, yeah.
Well, I can call the one behind you, then come back to you.
That'd be great.
Eighty-one. Oh, eighty-two. Yeah, well, just try them again. Z B A twenty-two eighty-two, ruling seminar for a special permit to erect the sandwich board signed on the premises numbered five forty-one, Washington Street, Quincy. The applicant and the representative here. All right, let's move that.
Ten.
Ten to ten.
The chairman regarding case number twenty-two dash eighty-two, running seminary for a special permit to erect a sandwich board signed on the premises numbered five forty-one, Washington Street, Quincy. I make a motion to move that to January tenth.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Don't move.
Council Foley, you good to go now? They're taking a break here for a second. Z B A twenty-two ninety-five, Patrick Foley, ask for a variance to subdivide the lot into two lots. Conduct, construct a single-family dwelling with an inline on the new street lot at the premises numbered seventy-two, seventy-four Hall Place, the applicant and the representative here. Go slow.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley. I'm the attorney representative of the project. I'm joined by Jim Edwards, who is the architect for the project. The property is located at seventy-two Hall Place. It is located in the residential A zoning district. Currently on the property, the applicant lives there right now and is older occupied. If you see the pictures of the property and the difference that the owner has made eighteen short months since owning this property, it shows the pride that he has in the neighborhood, the pride he has in the property, and just the kind of work that he does. The lifelong Quincy residents, they live in one of the units, and they just had their second child. So we all know they're not outgrowing that unit, and that's the reason that we're here tonight. The applicant is seeking to subdivide the lot. This is a very unique lot, which is over twenty-six thousand square feet. What's going on there is the lot isn't very wide, but it's very long. So the applicant is seeking to subdivide a building home in the back with an in-law apartment, which would be there for a family member if they needed it. Not only is this lot unique, but the street is very unique too. It's residential A, but there is numerous multifamily homes on this property, as well as four different structures on this property, which may, what the applicant is seeking to do with the house behind the house, because most of these lots on this street are very unique. Let's mention, this street, this street and this property is two hundred yards away from Village Street, which is a heavily dense commercial area of the city. Each property that after the subdivision will meet the seven thousand six hundred and fifty square foot requirement, which is required in the residential A zoning district. The two-family home, they'll have the parking set up the same way that it is right now, with two spots still left and two spots to the right. Originally, the applicant was seeking to put the driveway on the left-hand side. After meeting with the city, the city told the applicant that wasn't possible because emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to access the hall, so they ended up putting it on the right-hand side. And on the right-hand side, the applicant is going to be doing, is it's gonna be about two hundred feet worth of fence and shrub to make it look very nice, to block the view of any neighbors or anything, if they don't want to look at the driveway. I'm going to turn it over to Jim to go into a little more detail of the property, the structure.
Mr. Board, my name is Jim Edwards. I'm a volunteer architect, and I've been working with John Colleen for a while now on this project, and probably all seen the sketches in the presentation, and the architectural part of this project is fairly straight ahead. There's a basement. The building is forty-five by. Forty-eight by thirty-five. The basement has a. That's here. That's unoccupied, as we can't put them with some storage, the stairway down. That's it. There's really nothing to the basement. It's unoccupied. Forty-five across the front, thirty-five feet wide building. First floor, very, again, very straight ahead. Kitchen, living room, study, little office here for Joe to do his work, then the garage on the first floor level. So it's compact program. It's a compact design, and not a lot to talk about there, really. Second floor is. It's the, I have a save on foam core here, so we have a. Flipping around. Second floor, primary bedroom, 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 laundry, closet, master bedroom. So there's basically three bedrooms on the second floor of the main house, and on the second floor is the garage. It's a living room, kitchen, and dining area.
That's you. Sorry, no, I was just kidding. Jim, is that breechway both floors or is it just the first floor?
Breechway is just the first floor.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. And on the basement, the.
Glad you told that.
Third floor is. TV room, guest room. I don't know if there'll be more kids in this. Nothing about that. Nothing to me, but on the third floor, second floor above the garage of the in-law suite, there's just one single bedroom. This space here is two-story space from the living room, and with a walkway up, study, bedroom, bathroom. So the architectural components of this plan are pretty simple, actually. This is out of old, very old. It was, we were beginning to try to figure out what we were doing aesthetically for John Colleen, and this was just a kind of a peintre en sketch, but we were told that they wanted a building that was complimentary, first of all colonial style, but secondly, very complimentary of what a beautiful job they did on the front of the building that they just renovated. So basically, it's gonna be a handsome building. It's gonna be built with quality materials. It's something that they hope to be able to be proud of as they get assimilated into the neighborhood. Working with John Colleen and this project.
Yeah, just to put this in context, we obviously talked about how unique this lot is with the lane. By right, they could put three single-family homes on this lot. Just, I was just putting in context with the size, if it was a normal-sized lot with the width. So I just want to put that in context and just to describe the area just a little bit more, it's Res A meets Res B, and there's business beach, so there's a lot of overlap down that area of the city. So I just wanted to add that to the record.
No, was any thought given to doing an attached garage? Like more of like a fully attached, you know, as opposed to offset off the back? Or was that more for the space in front, the parking areas?
It's.
That makes, did my question make sense, Council?
Well, it is fully attached.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not like, you know, like just right on the side of the house or something, you know, like, instead of off the breechway. Is that, was there anything? I see, because you're, I get you're trying to push it back. Is that?
Well, that and just this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay. Thanks. Charlie, any questions?
I know for this. I'm good for right now.
Guys are good for a second. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call. Come on up.
Albert Vaughn. I live at forty-eight Hall Place with my wife, and we have a similar situation. We were fortunate enough that our daughter and her husband built the house on the sixty-eight thousand square feet that they had, and we reside in the original, in the original house, which is single-family. Their house is two thousand, it's almost the reverse of this, and John and Colleen have been great neighbors, and I think it's gonna be an excellent addition to the improvement to the area.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Joe Morris. I'm at seventy-five Hall Place, and I'm all for this. You can see, basically an eyesore, it's something nice, bright, vibrant, and basically I just can't wait to see how well it, they said, they've looked at it.
Appreciate it.
My name is Joe Montilio. I live in forty-one Hall Place on the project. He's done a beautiful job on the first house, and I'm sure he's gonna do the same thing with the second.
Thank you.
My name's James Devine. Before I say oppose or not, can I take a quick look?
We can do a poser undecided next, but if you, this is just for a favor.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
And I have a.
It's always like to say.
I just want to take a quick look at the pictures here. Yeah, thank you. Sorry to take up everybody's time. So where is this located? To the one where there's the blue house on? Is there a one down there? Two houses just like that?
You can direct the questions to us, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
He's about four houses down, without a vote?
Yeah, so that looks almost identical, yeah. So.
Oh, you're right next door? Okay.
Okay.
It feels like houses, because you drive up there and it feels like a lot of space.
Yeah, so we've walked there a lot, and walked around, and everything too, and I've obviously seen that with the house, and well-maintained. So this looks great. I think, Joe.
Appreciate it, Mr. Devine. Anyone else in favor? There's a letter of support here. Matthew Julie Tobin, fifty-four Hall Place, lifelong Quincy resident, at least partly still say to this day due to assistance, was formed in two thousand and ten. We have twice graciously granted near identical variants in relation to subdividing an existing lot and constructing a new two-family home in rear forty-eight Hall Place to support our rolling family. We keep our parents close. We've had the opportunity to speak, review the plans, having them as neighbors currently. We can speak to the character, good value, consider them a valued property, and would propose project as being approved. Last call. Call out and party here and close. D P W, we've reviewed the supplemental for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. Install survey monuments and property corners for the subdivision. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Submit grading plan, grading plan, and utility plan for review before issuing a building permit. Upon completion of the project, as bill plan shown on all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. Oppose or undecided? Yes, sir.
Hello, good evening. My name is David Silverman. I live in eighty-all place.
Lawrence.
My wife would have been there, but she was at home. She hasn't been. I'd like to read my statement and give you some photos. By me, please.
Charlie.
This letter is to inform the zoning board that my wife and I are rejecting proposal Z B A number twenty-two ninety-five. We are rejecting this variance because it does not meet state and local zoning laws and codes in regards to lot feet frontage required in order to build. We also, but more importantly, objecting to where the access road to the proposed structure on our property line is to be. The homeowners at seventy-two, seventy-four Hall Place, the eighty-five feet of frontage, as well as other legal setbacks for any single-family home. Road frontage currently is less than one hundred feet from the existing grandfather two-family. Status of a way in order to bring the variance to build on an existing lot cannot be established because there is no current existing paper route. The proposed single-family with apartment will change the existing property to Res B, which is differently, which is a different zone than the present Res A. We are also concerned that an apartment can and will be used for an Airbnb, if not now, then in the future. The proposed garage also requires a separate variance. The homeowner stated that goal is to create a compound of four residential units on the current property that's zoned as a single-family residence, A. The owner has also previously stated in conversation that she wants to build her forever home. Most forever homes do not have an added apartment, and as a real estate broker, I have heard that statement many times, only to discover that the real estate was all sold off after a few years, and the owners went on to other projects. Quincy no longer supports pork chop laws in order to build an existing property. Because of their request to build an access road next to my property line, close to my kitchen and bedroom windows, we are claiming environmental and medical hardship. Environmental hardship because of the noise and air pollution of the snowplows at five in the morning. The landscape is at seven in the morning, the postal and the Amazon trucks. The owner there, from what I was, from what I learned, wakes up at four and leaves at six. So you can rest assured that that access road, which is over two hundred feet, is gonna be blocked. We are also concerned about the multiple heavy equipment vehicles going in and out during construction of the proposed structure. My wife has rheumatoid arthritis, and her doctor tells her to get plenty of rest. Do you feel that her rest and health will be compromised as a result of an access road too close to our home? We are also objecting to this variance because of where the proposed access road is to be. It was originally to be installed on the left side of the existing building numbered seventy-two Hall Place, and we were fine with that. However, plans were changed at the last minute to reflect the access road closer to our bedroom and kitchen windows, where we spend a great deal of time. I was told by the owner of seventy-two, seventy-four Hall Place that the driveway had to be changed because the fire trucks couldn't access via seventy-two Hall Place to the proposed new structure. I visited the Quincy Fire Department yesterday morning and spoke to three of Lieutenant Joseph Callahan's employees, and they all told me that the Quincy Fire Department does not have a minimum driveway clearance opening for their fire trucks. In addition, the driveway at seventy-two is wider than the driveway at seventy-four. So I am not sure why or who changed the access road from seventy-two to seventy-four Hall Place. Fifty Hall Place, which has an access road to a house in the rear, has a fifteen-foot wide access road driveway. So I do not understand the mathematical change from seventy-two to seventy-four Hall for an access road. In addition, seventy-two Hall Place's existing driveway is twenty-four feet wide, point in fact, wider than the existing driveway at seventy-four Hall Place, which is slightly under twenty feet. Each driveway needs to be a minimum of twenty feet for a Quincy building with outdoor requirements. I have some pictures here I'd like to submit. I have some pictures here I'd like to submit. May I approach?
Yeah.
I also wish to mention in regards to the in-law. The area is zone residential A. The applicant has not requested a change of use. They are looking to build a single-family home with a detached in-law. In past history, in regards to the board's decisions, you have denied such requests. This quote in-law apartment that is being presented as a home for someone's parents has a detached entrance on the second floor with a one and a half bath and a bedroom on the third floor. Most elderly parents want to live on one level. Please note that this is not being created as an in-law, but as a resale add-on, which is a one-bedroom rental. This helps the applicant on resale, so they can then have the use change to a two-family for resale value. The applicant is a real estate agent. In real estate law, there is a clause that values and enforces quiet enjoyment as well as peaceful living within the confines of your home and property. We hope and pray that the board can help us seniors live out the rest of our lives with peaceful and quiet enjoyment on the very property we have owned since August of nineteen eighty-nine. In closing, in lieu of a satisfactory finding here tonight, the owners of Hall Place, fully owners of Hall Place, I urge the board to postpone, postpone their findings on this variance until they can get a clarification on the roadway driveway issue in regards to left or right of the subject property. Please note that the homeowner applying for this variance is the current Quincy assessor. This is the proposed driveway initially, which I had no problem with. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can you keep those for the record, the pictures?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Oh, yes. Opposed or undecided, second call. Third call, call it part of the hearing, close. Counsel.
Yeah, there's a couple of those assumptions, um.
No, no, just before you go with that, so the road obviously, you know, going right by it, where there's nothing adjacent to the left, there's really no way to do it over there? So, and what was that, because of a turnaround? So I understand, like, his question, the, the fire department, they probably didn't understand what, where.
Like a fire truck can't, can't get out of that.
Can't, they can't?
No.
They can't reverse out?
No.
Okay.
And that was the original plan, that's where they wanted to put it. And they just, they can't do it.
And so that's where the landscaping on the right side?
Yes.
Is proposed.
Cause the applicant has been very proactive. Obviously, by a lot of the support that's come up here tonight, has been very proactive in meeting with everybody in the neighborhood, including the gentleman that lives next to it.
So that's.
Very proactive, and that's the reason we have the shops, that's why we have two hundred feet of fence. And that's why also, you know, we're forty feet on the wall, forty feet.
Your forty feet from my property? He lost weight.
We didn't interrupt you, sir.
The, uh. So you, the driveway, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah? Where is your driveway coming in from?
Our driveway, our proposed driveway is going to come in.
Okay, and this house is?
It's home.
Yeah.
So at this point, where the driveway enters, we're closing.
Okay.
But as we progress down, you can see we've got plenty of airspace between the two houses.
And you'll propose when the arc bodies all the way down from that point, basically for me to turn it in after?
Ten to twelve-foot arc bodies, we're keeping them back from the end of the road.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then we can run as far down as, as needed.
Okay.
Ram down as far as the driveway goes. We're also proposing a six-foot, you see that?
Okay, okay.
But I, I thought of this.
No question.
Would need for fence make a difference?
Need for fence make a difference? Need for fence make a difference? Would a, need for fence make a difference to you?
No, I don't want a road there.
Okay.
And also, if I may, um, this proposed driveway, he wants to put in a access road plus a driveway. So if the width of the driveway is twenty feet and he puts in an eight-foot wide driveway, that means he's got a twelve-foot access roadway. That's, that's extremely narrow. On the other side, he has a full twenty-four feet with no driveway. I follow him. Like a man following.
It's turning, saying that they can't turn around.
That's what I mean, it's a sand. It doesn't make any sense.
It's gotta be like a grade issue, is it because of the grade on that side?
The city, the city came down, sorry.
Have you ever heard of that there? The city saying like they couldn't, they won't be able to access from that side?
The lot narrows kind of tapers on that side, I looked at it back in January.
Yeah, it definitely narrows up onto that side, I mean, but.
I think they have a structure there, I, I haven't been there since January.
Yeah, yeah.
I think there was a structure there that they would have had to take some, uh, dispel to, in the part of the household structure.
Yeah. I'm just trying to, you know, trying to find a neighborly solution, you know, like in the interest of.
They took, did, I know, I get it. Didn't everybody in the neighborhood?
No, I get it.
Did some good work and, and the assumption that they're gonna, I mean, some kind of Airbnb is.
Well, it can anyways, it's a residence.
Right.
I just, it doesn't make any sense. Is that structure in the back left corner of your parent's home, is that structural, is that structural support? Apparently, is that like wide, but I mean, it looks like there's a staircase. I mean, we're just looking at the problem.
So. These are decks here.
Okay.
We would have to, right now, this safe tent of all people, deck.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We would have to dismantle the deck. And then the driveway would be. You, you still need a stairway to get into the house, you've only got seventeen, eighteen. It's extremely tight, there's no, there's no open airspace.
They got my driveway.
Over, no, 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 the driveway itself, in here, you've got plenty of open airspace.
Yeah, yeah, but you're also no.
The driveway that you referenced over here is fifteen-foot wide.
Yeah.
But there's plenty, there's wide airspace around it.
John, I'm just, I'm just saying.
This is a choking point.
I get it, but there's nobody.
Whereas this is wide open.
Yeah, and there's just nobody on that side, is, 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 I think, like, you know, it's, it's, it's just the, the conversation. I, I get it's more challenging for you, but it would also be, you know, I think if it's really truly not an impediment outside of just removing that deck, I just don't see how that's not the better solution here, you know, uh, for the variance to get a subdivided lot. That's just me thinking, I'll, the board might have different feelings. But I, I, you know, you hear a neighbor who's been here for, you know, we've heard it all like, you know, thirty-plus years. And I know you guys have as well, so, you know, I think that you know, roles were reversed, you'd be like, just put the, put the driveway on the other side. Charlie, you got any comments?
I don't, I don't see it as an issue with either way, if you feel that. Think that, but you have invited.
Okay.
Again, that's.
Okay.
Right. The key piece, if you want the other way. You know, if you went to the other side.
Well, there's no problem, I mean, it's the city of Queensland, that's what I'm thinking, like, it's never gonna be built there, it's never gonna bother you.
That wouldn't object.
They're never, no, yeah, they're gonna be awfully silent.
That's all I can, I mean, you're looking at what, two hundred feet of, of fence, how many arc bodies?
Right down the lane.
Yeah.
So it's close to forty thousand dollars worth of, between the trees and the cars.
Kind of a nice buffer.
Yeah, who, wondering, I'm not, because I've become smart, the architect is here, and I wonder if, you know, maybe addressing addressing the whole issue of that deck, and we, rearranging the staircase so that that driveway can go on the left, is that, is that kind of a hall possibility?
That would be the other, I mean, you probably, you didn't look at that property, probably, but.
Yeah, sure, you want, you focus on the new house.
Yeah, yeah.
It's unfortunate, choke point here, if you, if you blow that off, probably, probably led to the house of what, seventeen-three?
Yeah, that's what you just said, seven, ten. Well, what's mandatory for a driver, what's required? Twelve? Counsel Maloney, I, I know you have some comments, sorry, I didn't mean to. I'm, I'm not, I'm not used to being in this seat, you know, so I apologize.
So, 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 Colleen and her husband were neighbors and they did a great job up on Crystal Street. And then I know them on Hall Place, I know what they've done on Hall Place, and they've done a fantastic job on Hall Place. And they're here for, um, to, to get the front so they can get the back, so there's any. But one of the things I could say when I was speaking to Colleen's office is that you really have to look at all the neighbors, not just ninety percent of the neighbors that are really happy, and you have one neighbor that's not, and all we're talking about is moving to the other side. And I realize that they're gonna be putting expensive fencing and expensive, um, you know, landscaping that would go down that side, but it's not gonna solve the problem of the neighbor that spoke tonight. So, and I know you're listening to them, but I think there's a compromise that could happen, and I think both parties can, can get to what they want. You know, the concern that I, I've also heard was that in-law apartment. And, you know, I, I understand what else is coming from out there, comparing my mom, she lives on the street, so she's not in an in-law apartment, she's her own home. But, you know, we do have to be careful about what we're adding on there too. That's usually a hardship that gets added on, not when you first, when first moving in, so the fact that we're talking about an in-law apartment at the time of building is causing some concerns with people in the neighborhood too. I did say that if I heard from people in the neighborhood that I would bring it up, I just wanted to see where we're going with that, but I feel as though really the driveway, I think is the biggest issue. And, you know, if you were the neighbor, just like you said, if you're the neighbor that's on that side, the fence, the flowers, and everything is not gonna make a difference because it's changing their style of life that they have had for a really long time. And that's really what they're asking for, and I think there is a compromise that can happen. And I don't think that there's any reason for anybody to change about this, I think this is a really simple fix that maybe, I didn't realize that you'd have to fix the deck, but I think the deck would probably be, let's just, but I, I don't know, because I'm not the one that's so best, but I just wanted to mention that because they do do beautiful work though, and, you know, I, I don't, what they did to what was there before, what they brought it up to. There's no question in my mind that some increase, increase the value that they put in, I applaud the work that they do. So I think it's a, it's an easy compromise that could happen, hopefully, for what's happening over there, and that there's a win for all sides in this.
I would, I would love to see, as I say all the time, aging in place is something we're challenged with at this board and in-laws and stuff like that, counsel, I'd love to see that one addressed. I'll keep raising my hand for that one, because we get that at least once a week.
Yep.
And it makes, it puts us in a tough position, not because of the current owner, but usually the next owner. And there's gotta be some way where we can, you know, allow it with, with, you know, check-ins or whatever. I mean, I doubt that somebody's gonna move into their house and have an open breezeway where they have a stranger living there, you know, I just don't.
No, I don't think, again, that's not, that's what I'm saying, I'm just.
No, no, I know that, yeah.
Just to say, I don't, I happen to know that it's usually the post-secondary owners.
It's the second owner, yeah.
That have that.
Yes, that's the one we have the issue.
Yeah.
Uh, counsel. I, I'd love to see you guys just go to the drawing table and just see if you can come up with that on the left side and, and, and just see if we can appease that, is that, is that possible?
We have to talk to them, but it's, the city, the city was pretty adamant to us that it's not gonna work.
Okay, I mean, I, 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 or if we can have the city tell us that it won't work.
We have a problem. It's a letter with a record?
I don't think so.
Sorry.
That's all right. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Could we read the letter?
Yeah, one second.
Yep.
Reviewed the proposal to install access driveway at the front lot, lot lines to the rear of your property, determined that it would not approve an access driveway on the left side of the existing home due to inadequate access width for safe passage by emergency vehicles. Approved a new access driveway on the right side of the existing home because it conforms to the minimum access width required for emergency vehicles. A paving permit to install an access driveway on the right side of the property line can be issued at any time.
I agree.
Okay, do good.
May I approach?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, counsel, I, I get it.
Yeah, if I could, just one more thing. The other thing is that deck that they put on, that was a recent addition to that deck, so that's no hardship. What we're talking about is a driveway, and it's the fire department that we actually spoke to about this too, so.
I get it.
With all due, with all due respect, I think that's something that has to go back and review, it's not in the order, it doesn't say that fire department is not sending that, the fact that we're getting a letter from the commissioner.
I appreciate it, thank you.
May I mention something?
No, no, you've had your time to speak, I appreciate it.
I need, I need to refute something, man.
I, I appreciate it, sir. Let, let's have our decision, thank you. And I personally, I would like to see Charlie push, but I, I go with what, uh, intersectional services director says, can't be done on that left side, then, then I'm comfortable with going ahead.
I'm sure they're gonna spend fifty thousand dollars to whatever.
Put something on the right side, yeah.
Now, you don't have to do it if you move from.
I agree, but if that's what we're being told, that we can't do it on the left side, then, you know, that's what, I'd have to make this decision based on how it work, you know, that there wasn't the adequate footage, so.
Intersectional services says you can't do it on the left, you can't do it on the left.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would like, let you see it on the left side.
Yeah.
Um, myself, and that's why we discussed the fortune, the stairs.
Right.
If it can't be done, and the architect didn't testify, we still need to, so we would have to, not be able to say.
Paul, make a motion?
Paul, it's true, sir. Mr. Jem, regarding case TBA twenty-two ninety-five, power, just want to put variance and subdivide the lot into two lots and construct a single-family dwelling with an in-law unit at a newly created lot on premises numbered seventy-two and seventy-four Hall Place. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
So move.
Good. TBA twenty-two eighty-nine, Latitude Capital LLC for a variance finding to re-subdivide the property to two processes of build new single-family residence on the number twenty-nine Grove Street. Applicant or their representative here, both counsel.
Thank you, Jim and Rob Plumby, Plumby and Plumby.
Should be an easy one.
We'll see you again. Um, thank you for hearing this matter this evening. Let me, let me first note, if I can, um, you may remember, you may not, uh, this same matter, uh, was on before this board uh, last day of June of twenty-one, and you see the approvals for the, the relief that were being taken on this same application. Due to circumstances, uh, that particular decision by this board has a fire effect. You have pandemic, you have economic and financial reasons, worldwide, why it wasn't even more at that time. Uh, some things have happened since then, um, you know, so again, I do represent the, the now owner of Latitude Capital LLC. Um, who again is proposing, uh, the same, requesting the same relief that was requested back in, back in twenty-one. Um, so again, the address is twenty-nine Grove Street, uh, in West Quincy. Um, this is a pretty oversized lot for a resident in a district. Uh, it's about fourteen thousand eight hundred thirty square feet. Uh, in fact, uh, it's recognized, uh, with registry deeds and plans and have been reported as well as the city's assets office is two, it's two lots now. Uh, because of same ownership, these, these lots have merged, uh, so this is really a request to kind of be subdivided, uh, you know, and be able to build a single-family residence, which is allowed, uh, on the, on the new parcel to the rear. Um, so it's presently improved by a single-family residence, uh, on the south side, uh, of the property, uh, fronting Grove Street. As well as a twenty-five-foot wide private way. It's, it's on paper, uh, what I'd like to do is just provide this board with just the assessor's plan of this particular lot. Kind of, uh, I've highlighted this private way as well. Kind of show it a little bit better to the board, uh, so it, it was a private way that essentially was supposed to run from Grove Street right through to, to up it. Uh, that was never done, um, my understanding is, is just, just on the Grove. My understanding is, is just, just on the Grove Street, uh, right off of Grove Street, there's a little area that, that is paved that I think has been used for parking by maybe a couple of different neighbors, uh, next door neighbor and probably his property as well. So, again, this is, this is for a, you know, re, basically re-subdiving, uh, because of zoning merger. And it's important to note as well that the new proposed lot in the back, which is kind of an L-shaped lot, we're not requesting any zoning relief, uh, to build this new zone, this new single-family residence, which again is allowed in this particular district. It's over nine thousand square feet. You know, it was designed in a fashion where we meet all of the zoning requirements, you know, for residents A. So, we're meeting, you know, the side setbacks, rear, uh, frontage as well. What happens is, you know, it creates some, some violations with respect to the, the existing single-family, uh, fronting on Grove Street. You know, however, um, we are requesting minimal relief for that. We are providing, uh, the required parking for that home, three spaces. Three spaces will be provided for the new single-family residence as well, uh, which will front the private way.
Is this a new owner?
This is a new owner. The property, uh, my client back in twenty one, uh, had sold the entire parcel. The new owner just never continued the matter and ended up losing the house through foreclosure. You know, so I'm actually representing the private.
The new owner?
The private owner now. You know, um, the office lent, uh, to, to this particular individual to, you know, uh, you know, affect the subdivision and build a single-family residence. And unfortunately, financial times, you know, hardships.
The guy foreclosed it.
I don't, I don't know. Thank you, Dave, for, uh, because I had been working, uh, a little bit after the fact. Never moved forward with my client, uh, back in twenty one, he ended up selling the property. But the woman that had purchased it just wasn't able to move forward. Continues matter, form a, signed by, endorsed by my client, but just never, never was able to do it. You know, and financially just ended up losing the house to foreclosure.
So, my question, nothing's changed since we approved it in July of twenty one. Nothing, just the ownership.
It's the same plan that I filed in twenty one.
Just the ownership.
That's correct.
And the file is on record and the registry deed.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, the plan, the, you'll see the plan on record as well with the registry deeds. It's actually, it is two lots. Yeah, I did actually record, uh, the A and R plan, uh, but that wasn't enough to, to protect your rights under the decision. There's no permits I've been pulled, you know, so that's why I'm, I'm here again today. I did speak to Counsel Meloche, Meloche right at the beginning, you know, and he was very adamant. I said, Mr. Fleming, is this exactly what you had filed in twenty one before the board? I said, yes, yes, it is, you know. Back in twenty one, board had some questions and we had a couple of different hearings, but they just wanted to understand the private way and rights in the private way and things as well, you know. So, each adjacent property owner has some rights to the midsection of private way. So, we're able to, to, you know, speaking to Mr. Dugan at that time as well, the, the way will have to be improved, you know, for access to the new home entirely, you know. They'll likely have to be in a grievance place, uh, adjacent property owners with respect to the maintenance of, of that portion of the way. Residents on the Upton Street end, Upton Street end had some concerns. No intention of going all the way through, you know. You continue to use what you're using on the private way, there's no, no intention, you know, to go any further than this particular lot. You know, so if this is merely for access to the new proposed home, then that is it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're well good, you answered it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone want to speak in favor?
I see the block light before.
Yeah, come on.
Oh, fuck, this is the exception. The highlight is the private way.
And we, uh, why, does this, you know, all of them?
Which, no, all we did was we subdivided the lot.
We didn't stay any rooms.
It was, the, the location was exactly the same as this. The, the biggest issue was ownership of, the ownership of the private way.
This is all just.
We most had the discussion that the private way is. Each, each person owns it.
Counsel, so, just, just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
Original proposal.
Yeah.
A year ago, perhaps, did we propose the house that would be potentially built on this? Would, would you need a variance for anything? Is there any?
No, the proposal's no relief, we've deemed requested on that level.
Okay.
So, we meet the frontage, setbacks, lot size, obviously.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It's just a lot.
It should, I don't know, so, yeah, yeah. It's just running on private way. The, the existing becomes more non-conforming, but it's already non-conforming.
Yeah, we, we're requesting, uh, a relief, uh, on the lot size.
That's it.
We're kind of creating that. But the frontage, you know, um.
Setbacks, same, they don't know.
The same, they're not changing, so really non-conforming.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I, I, I'd say, yeah, it looks nice. I mean, it's a big lot out there, if you're not asking for more space. Now that house in there, it doesn't seem like it's going to change the neighborhood to me.
Yeah.
Clearly, if the person had an issue with the private way, you should be here today.
They might.
Said that some people had an issue with it. The people in Upton don't like the idea of it going all the way up, and they're going to be nice to the property for them. But other than that, I think, uh, it looks good. When they get them up on.
Yeah, so they don't even have rights to.
Oh, they don't have rights.
Same thing, because they're not adjacent to.
Yeah, because that would be owned by six feet of either side of both, both adjacent property.
This is, this is one to land there for those, so.
And we've, we've had this paper street issue before, Mrs. Devine. So, basically what happens is either side of the property on six feet in, is that what it is?
Yeah, they can obstruct, you know, trap.
The biggest issue that you run into with these things is maintenance.
Yeah.
If he wants to pay.
Sure, who's going to be the one to try?
Right, if he wants to pay, then who's responsible for, I'll keep the maintenance, paving, plowing, whatever. That's the biggest issue we run into with these.
Right. Hopefully, they know, they should be there. Once again, Brian Falmucci, you know, on the step down. So, uh, but if it was already talked about previously, the neighbors in touch base, I hope they know.
Good.
Thanks.
And if they out, then I think it's great, because another house right now, it doesn't seem like a big deal.
Good chat, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything to add, Mr. Devine?
Ladies, I'm Peter Moran, I live at ninety-two Grove Street. Good evening, Mr. Dugan. I do want to speak to guests so far, I have questions about the frontage on Grove Street, the access. It's around the corner. I was before this four years ago, received a Rose address. So, um, then I withdrew my application at that time. I was requesting a relief on the frontage, eighty-five feet of frontage, and I've looked at fifty feet. Most of this street is fifty feet of frontage. My, my question on this one, how many feet of frontage is this? I know you're calling it a paper street. Out of my lot, it's also a paper street. So, I'm here looking for information from my view of judgment, and I'm not speaking against this so far.
It looks like if you add it up, it's about a hundred and five, eight, hundred and four?
He isn't going to lie.
No, 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 just on the private way, because that'd be the, that'd be your frontage is on the private way.
Are you talking about the frontage on the new home?
The frontage on Grove.
On the existing.
The front, the frontage for Grove.
Well, that doesn't change.
Yeah. But I think it's fifty.
It appears to be a driveway next to the house, that's about.
Well, that's the private way.
That's the private way, yeah.
So, that doesn't, it's not part of their property anyway, they don't have any, they're not paying taxes on it, so.
Exactly, same with the private way that I.
Correct, so.
Right.
That was given to me by the city half of it, half to the neighbors.
Yeah, just like we just done, yeah.
Yeah, similar to this. So, I don't have a problem with it, the neighbors don't have a problem with it. I'm just concerned about the frontage. If this was getting relieved by frontage, similarly, to the Paul Street recently received there. Uh, maybe before you.
We'll be here somewhere in. So, Dugan. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Third call. Part of the hearing closed. Now, this is just, I'm letting, Counsel Maloney, letting people know that you may have six hundred worth of residence, uh, notifying those meetings. opposed or undecided? First call.
My name is Mark Fitzgibbon, I live at forty-four Upton Street. I have my wife and our two kids. And so, we actually abut this property on a diagonal. That's our backyard. We lived there, we've owned the house for a little over three years. From what I can tell, it, we said it was always owned by a developer. The house was redone, it went for sale, it went for rent, it went for sale, went for rent. It was divided, uh, previously. And I think, you know, the last couple of years, our observations as neighbors have been surveying just the lawn, it's, you know, foot in a room. I have everyone seen the driveway shovel, um, or the walkway shovel, the steps even. There's trash outside from various tenants, some trash they've gone around. And I just, I'm a little bit worried that if they get a second home there, it's going to be more the same. So, really, you know, until the owner can demonstrate to the neighborhood that, um, they can take care of the house they have, I don't think we should entertain the thought of that being a second.
Again, counsel said it's a new owner. Now, and, and the potential for two separate owners are probably more likely than.
Sure.
The current matter.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I think about, it was developed our own.
Right.
What we saw, the neighbors, and it's a great neighborhood, a lot of private ownership, everybody takes care of, you know, lawns, homes.
Yeah.
It's lender own now, I can.
Yeah.
The following guy's a magic, he's sure the neighbors, they might clean it up.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I have long days. This would be, my prior client in twenty one was, was an investor, but I'm standing here, family living in the night, twenty-nine Grove Street hole. But he ended up selling the property soon after the decision came out. That person just wasn't able to continue with that and ended up losing the whole of this land. So, it's been neglected, I'll, I'll certainly, um, convey that to my client as well. But in the meantime, as his, his plan is to sell the, the properties, but I'll convey that to him and make sure.
That's, that's the best we can.
Thank you. Opposed or undecided? Second call? One out.
Let's go on. I can see it. I mean, it's easy, it's easy to say. So, Chris Bell from Forty-Eight Upton Street. Then again, still fighting about traffic. Will say one thing that, um, I think you should take consideration. Is a lender just proposed on family and says, hey, you're gone, we're going to subdivide your land now. We know it's subdivided, and then we're selling. They're targeting, you know, saying, I'm going to do it. To apply, I don't know if I can speak to him, it was the lender.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's a bad move, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I beg.
And then sell the land.
I, I understand.
I've been here for twenty years, I've been in Quincy for forty. That's low.
Yeah.
Very low. And, but with the traffic part of it, which I came here originally for, until I read that, I didn't, I didn't realize it was foreclosed. I thought they were selling it there. Because like I said, I got a letter on the seventeenth of November from Noel that this was happening. These letters don't come up to us like we should get them in enough time. Like I said, I didn't know about the one that first broke that, this news to me. We live in the area, I mean, we should know about.
So, like, they, I mean, again, part of the zoning code, right? We only have to mail, like, it's.
No, I understand that.
It's ridiculously low in terms of.
But it's impactful.
So, no, I know that, that's why, that, you know, that's why we have board councils, hopefully that, you know, unfortunately yours is, you know, moved on to greener pastures.
No, no. So, but with that being said, and, and I understand that, but with the traffic we're talking about is so impactful to that area.
Sure.
It affects all of it, for no matter if it's a furnace, or if it's on Grove Street. An extra family with three people in the house, there's three extra cars on Grove Street, that's impactful to the area. Director Brennan said he's doing an extensive study, and there's something on the end of Grove Street in Bates right now. What's been there since before, uh, uh, Thanksgiving. And they're tracking the amount of cars going through here. So, we're, we're tracking the cars that shouldn't be on the road or cutting through, and now we're adding another house with three cars potentially. Or three renters, whoever, whatever.
Yeah.
But I will say that I'm a little upset that I found out that they foreclosed on that house. I never knew the original owner. I seen about working on his house in, I think, two thousand twenty. And in two thousand twenty, when I seen the sale signs, I said, oh, they're selling. Didn't realize in.
I think that was another owner. I think there's been.
There's been three?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think there's somebody in between.
I seen a guy working on his house, um, and I said, great, when he's, it was starting to do the house, so, great, that's good. The house is, you know, used to be a, a train at the end of that street. There was never that many cars, we used to walk to school, now you gotta run over. So, just because you could have an empty lot, doesn't mean we can build it. Like, um, this gentleman that came down and asked some questions about, soon enough, you're going to have houses built between every one of those houses because they're all big lots. Quincy was never designed for that. Infrastructure, you know, the utilities, the nine-one-one, I mean, all that stuff, schools. I mean, are, are we really going to take the city to that level and then start saying, we don't have enough, uh, space in schools? We don't have the, the resources to follow the streets and, and take care of these cars. I think, I think we're in deep trouble with, with the amount of housing going up in Quincy so fast, like on Hospital Hill. I think we're going to end up being, sounding mistaken of what happens to the city of Quincy.
Not, not to be fresh, but it's a, it's a, it's the whole region is happening.
No, I, I understand that. It's just, I, I've been there for like twenty years in my house right now in Upton Street. I've been in the city for twenty more years, forgotten. And like I said, in the last ten to twelve years, the city's traffic has been going down the tubes. I've been in close contact, um, for four years with the problems with the traffic, the speeding, and nonsense in the area since Chris Tsasi.
And just, it's just, just say for a year and a half, they weren't driving in the stone.
No, true, but Chris Tsasi said to me, and I called him, it's the city, get used to it. And I said to him, well, not gonna, do a study. Back in two thousand nineteen, he did a study. In four hours, eleven hundred cars went by my house on Upton Street.
Kind of in the middle.
Kind of in the middle, right? So, they're coming off the expressway by Bates Road up my street. Okay. Two thousand twenty-two, Director Brennan did a study. Taking as many cars passed by my house on Forty-Eighth Upton Street. So, it's been seven days.
Six feet.
Twenty-seven thousand cars. It's two hundred fifty cars an hour that go by between six-thirty and ten. So, two hundred fifty cars every hour, like rapid five. And then a gentleman wants to subdivide his lot, uh, a real estate agent or whoever he is, wants to subdivide that lot because it's worth four hundred thousand dollars a lot, and put a house there and add three more cars potentially to the street, three more potentially to the schools, three more to the utilities. I, I just, I just don't understand why we're growing so fast and not taking into consideration what's going to happen in five years. I think the city should slow down. I think we should take a step back and stop the building. I mean, land is doing it, other cities are doing it, they have to just step back and say, let's just see how this is going to go. Is this going to get up?
The way I draw the line is you.
And, and I agree, and I, I don't, I don't fault you guys for doing what you guys do because.
Unpaid job, child.
No, but, but I think it's very easy to say, well, you know, he has the land. Well, he has the land, he does. I have land in my backyard, doesn't mean I should put a condo in my backyard.
Or you could try it.
I, I just wouldn't because I think it's, I think it's taken away from what city used, city of Quincy used to be. It was a small town feeling in the big city. Now, it's a big city feeling like a city. And I don't think the traffic that, you know, like I said, Director Brennan, I think, I think he's shocked that people really started to hate the city for the traffic. I really do. And I thought, you know, I, I don't know if you know, I have a lot of conversations with them and Noel, and I used to have a ton of conversations with the mayor's office and Ryan Falmucci. And it's, it's not, it's not going good for the city. As much as I like to see the nice fancy building in, in, uh, in the center, it does nothing for me. It does really nothing for me. I don't go into the city to say, hey, this is a big apartment building. I don't think it helps the taxes, it doesn't help me lower my tax rate, it does nothing for me. So, either you stop pushing people up because they keep on building these places, or they overstuff all these little properties with, you know, three families and six families and twelve families, as far as six families. I, I just, I, I just disagree with it.
I appreciate the passion, Mr. Bell.
Right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else opposed or undecided? John, you spoke in favor of this one when we approved it last year. Do you want to speak in?
I know that he was speaking in my, my short-term memory. But things change over time. But things change over time, I just want to get up, I'm, you know, I'm sort of like undecided in this. One thing I don't like, I do not like building a house behind another house, you know, like, so if that house behind the other house, if there are party animals in the front houses, whatever, or there are car lights splashing. But that's a common thing that we've been doing throughout the city. I mean, what everyone is saying about traffic, when I was coming off the highway tonight, it was insane. I mean, when I got off the Bourbon Parkway, when I was right at the Home Depot, my thing still said fourteen minutes to get the Quincy City Call, and I'm only like one point two miles away. So I had to take that left and, you know, pretend I'm going to State Street and then take a right and cut down Liberty Street.
Control somebody's neighbor, John.
Well, but I mean, I wanted to get into the meeting before six, so I'm not missing anything. But that's what we're doing because of development. It's kind of like, you know, if we were in the North Shore and you got off in Medford or Somerville and Cambridge or, that's what we are, we're a city now. We can never go back, but what people do have to think about is the long term, okay? And in the long term, I don't think there's going to be as many cars. And that's what the future really is, because there's absolutely no way we can keep squeezing more cars and more cars. So the new people who move to Quincy aren't people who are coming to Quincy who have two cars. We have like one people, one car people moving to Quincy. So I mean, it's, it's a cluster, I mean, this isn't a, you know, we don't want to turn an zoning board into a circus, but we definitely need better, like you were saying, better rules that the city council can do so you guys can make decisions that are, make more sense.
Maybe they have rules and we wouldn't have to make any decisions, you'd have to abide by the rules.
Well, the rules seem to be different for some people, and that's the problem that I always have. I like equal treatment to everybody, but that's not how the world works, okay? And the way the world works is that, like, you know, out of all the projects, we do need the new growth. One of the reasons that we can't slow down like Waymouth or Brantree is we have over a billion dollars in debt. So our city has turned into basically a corporation where we're renting property.
John, we're talking about this project, I don't need a diatribe about our tax incentives and product.
Well, I mean, the gentleman was saying his taxes weren't going down, he gets a tax area coming up on Monday, and I actually, I think my taxes are going down this year, so thank you.
Sorry, gentlemen, thanks.
Counsel.
We can do that, Malina.
Yeah.
Alright, so I do have, this is my neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, this is your street, this is your world.
So, and I'm going to, I'm going to talk with my neighbors on Upton Street and absolutely agree, it's a huge problem. They didn't mention that I talked to them, but I walk by their house, that's why they didn't talk to me, they don't should have called me, I just walk by. The issues that we're having here is that a couple of years ago, we did have on Zoom, we had the meeting, the next door neighbor was saying that they're using that, that private way as a park. It's a driveway, it's currently parked, there's cars parked both sides, it's not a private way, it's a driveway. And if it's going to be a private way, there should be parking, they should park and get a driveway, and the rest of it should be open, it's not. And by the way, maintaining your home doesn't mean going out. I don't care if it's owned by a lender or who, it may be backed, that's how they do it, it's going sky high and being rebacked. And here's an opportunity that we're saying, you know, we might have made a mistake when we subdivided this a couple of years ago. Leave it alone until somebody wants to come and tell us what they're going to build on it, because quite honestly, it's not being maintained right now. I'm concerned about this because this is something that the neighbors were really very adamantly opposed a couple of years ago, and the decision was to let it happen, and then it got foreclosed or whatever happened, however it happened, and we're here. And this has happened in many other places where we have great plans that are put before this board, and you give them the forgivenesses, and then the next thing you know, they're selling it. And the very thing that we thought we were getting, they're not getting, they're going back and showing you something else. It's a little disturbing, that's happening all over the city too. And if we can keep saying that it's, you know, up to the councils to make the rules, but we do have really good rules here at the city of Earth and ZBA too. We have to enforce them as well, and I know you all do. I'm just concerned because all of the things that they mentioned are very true, the traffic study that's happening, the cut through that's happening, the way people are driving. It is the Wild West in West Quincy to try to get into the other side of the city. So get across the highway, it's all, that is not free traffic. And by the way, instead of saying no entrance, the police don't enforce that either. So I understand that there's a lot of issues, but if we keep adding to the street and you narrow Grove Street as well to try to make it slower, so as you go up to Grove Street, it's actually more dangerous because it's very narrow, so trying to get into your neighborhood, it's a little bit further up. They narrowed the street to make people go slower, so now two cars can be able to get by. So it's really, it's a lot to think about, and you'd have to go see it, I know, we were looking at things before you guys, I want to wanted it, but it's a bad order where they're putting this, and it's, it's just, it's, it really is something that I think if we rethink it, or slow it down, or not do it yet until the traffic study is back, we'll definitely see. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Oppose or undecided, last call? Part of the hearing closed?
I kind of agree with that. I didn't think there was any issues with it, but I'm like, why are we approving this without selling the hundred and one property? We don't own this one, there are any neighbors.
So I don't think, I think it's just a reaffirmation of what we already did by, by being on record.
It's not a reaffirmation because it's a new, it's a completely new applicant.
Yeah.
If it was still the same guy, we've reaffirmed cases before where it's simple, easy, hey, I let this expire, I haven't been able to find a builder. This is a, this is an entirely new applicant, right? I mean technically.
I'm only looking at the subdivision of the lots, I'm not looking at the houses.
Yeah, except it'll be a by right project, because you can consider the proper way.
If they met all the, if they meet all the requirements, I see that.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like you're made, you're kind of leaving it up to chance.
Mostly with you.
I like, I guess.
Alright. Comments?
Foreclosed a lot of pieces of property by law. When you buy it back, it's probably led to all the fact that it was subdivided, not a single property.
That's what I figured it was.
Therefore, they borrowed more money, which caused the problem, they couldn't sell it, and it got foreclosed. And it probably got foreclosed later than it should have been because COVID stopped everything.
Yeah, voluntary, yeah, yeah.
It just, probably just hung out there, and it's unfortunate that they didn't take care of the property and annoy the neighbors at that point. City should have come some of that. It's quite a, I mean, we, we...
I agree with you.
I know.
It was COVID.
It's COVID, right.
PCAC.
But, I mean, we did, we did approve it, and it's on file of the registry.
Okay.
Well, it's a new applicant.
Actually, get Mr. Fluey to beat up his latitude, the property of him.
And I will, but you're right, I mean, he, they did lend to this particular order based on the subdivision that she, that she would continue to pursue that, and she, for some reason, never did, but he gave her quite a bit of time to do that, he did. Unfortunately, it just didn't...
Yeah, but that's a business decision.
It was, yeah, unfortunately, it impacts people, I think.
No, no, I get that, but that's, I didn't lend the money, that's a business decision, you know?
You're saying that the decision lapsed?
The decision lapsed, and we have a new owner. Am I incorrect in this? The prior, the prior decision had nothing, no impact on this decision.
So the council has asked us to wait for a traffic study to be done?
But that's for that independent project, we're not going to do a traffic study for a single-family subdivision.
Who did the contractor study?
Well, for this, of course, I mean, what are going to track, I mean, then every time, you're going to set a precedent for every single, every single homeowner. Request people homeowners to have a... No, she was talking about the traffic study on...
On the road.
First Brook and State Road. The state.
They're going up here too, they're going on Grove up in here.
On Grove, yeah, they're doing it up on the cut through.
As far as this here, it's cutting the vibe, the very house we're talking about, they're going to buy.
Yeah, except you will never come out on that side, so you're on, you're just on the other side, you're not on Upton.
No, they cut through with Grove Street.
You cut through?
I don't...
I'm driving on Grove Street, they wouldn't be, they'd be coming from the highway.
Yeah, they're not going to go off Upton, they can't go off.
You'll go Bates to Grove, the up, the ride up.
Are you saying the road goes under Grove, this, so you're not even, it's going to be a traffic problem coming out because, am I wrong? Is the cars coming into Grove Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're actually going to where all those people are shooting through, straight, yes. This Upton really is, I don't know, it's not...
Anyways, I mean, it's independent of that, I think you could, I think it's an entirely new decision, I don't think you need that frame of view at all.
So what is your opinion on the application?
I mean, I, I, I don't, I mean, my opinion is I don't, I don't like approving something without knowing who my applicant is, you know? Like this guy, this lender is not going to build the house.
True for them.
Yeah, I mean, he's not building anything, he's trying to recoup his money.
Is Latitude actually going to build the house or are they going to sell the place?
He has it under agreement with a single-family home builder. Single-family home builder.
Well, they're not planned, we won't, we wouldn't even see them, because it's by right, right?
If they, they meet all the conditions, it's over.
I mean, I don't know how you're going to build that by right, with setbacks.
So they met the, so they met the multiple...
Very, very modest home.
It's going to be very tall.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that rear setback creeps in quick.
No, but that was important to him to meet all the dimensional requirements, you know, the back when he designed it.
I mean, how are you, you're going to come twenty-five feet off the front, right? Twenty feet off the front, twenty-five feet off the back, so you're going to, you're going to build a five-foot wide house?
You're going to build a bull.
I mean, that's, that's the only way you can do that by right, you're not going to hit the, you're going to hit the rear setback right here, because it bumps up. Alright. I mean, make a motion, I'll approve the subdivision, I mean, there's no chance you can build a by right house.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case of ZBA twenty-two dash eighty-nine Latitude Capital LLC for variance of finding to resubdivide the property into two possible buildings, single-family residence on the premises number twenty-nine Grove Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested variance by...
And just to confirm, if they're, if they're out of whack on any dimensions, they have to come from...
I would put a condition.
Okay, put a condition that, you know, only, then if they...
To meet all existing zoning setbacks.
Yeah, that's all reviewed when it's...
Right. Okay, and then... Okay, and then, they have to meet existing zoning...
They have to meet existing zoning setback.
That's a condition of...
So the property has to be completely by right, so...
Yeah, yeah, or they have to come back to Congress.
Yes, that's right.
Oppos or favor? Opposed?
Thank, thank you very much.
Make a motion to, uh...
Make a motion for a term.
Oppos or favor?